Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 19th regular city council meeting. I am Mayor Cecilia Taylor. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually in city council chambers and in city council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers on one item. First, I'd like to do roll call and introduce city council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Mayor Cecilia Taylor, Vice Mayor Drew Combs, city council members Betsy Nash, Maria Dorr, and Jen Woolison. Staff present include: City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolte, City Attorney Neradorte, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. And again echoing a welcome to our November 19th regular city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and then return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, after the mayor calls for comment on the item you wish to speak, we ask that you engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. I would also like to remind folks that we are currently recruiting for the East Palo Alto Sanitary District Advisory Commission through December 6th. For any interested applicants, feel free to visit MenloPark.gov/sanitarysewer. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members. Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational Does the city council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? Councilmember Dorr.
I know there's one item on the consent calendar where we might have folks who want to share comments. I know there's also probably a lot of folks here for their regular business items. And I wonder if, when we get to that item, if we could see how many folks there are and make a decision of timing when we get there.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment other than to provide general information. City Clerk Heron, would you please call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, you are participating in person, complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. Okay, this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. And I do believe Congresswoman Eschew was going to be joining if you are online. If you can go ahead and engage that hand feature now. Okay, seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda are Presentations and Proclamations. This evening, we have two proclamations. The first is Item E1, Native American Heritage Month. City Clerk Heron, can you call for public comment for Item E1?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Proclamation E1, Native American Heritage Month, if you are in person, complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. All right, this will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation item All right, so Greg Castro, I do see your hand raised. The mayor is going to read the introduction to the proclamation, and then we will promote you to accept. So, Mayor Taylor, if you'd like to continue?
Thank you. National Native American Heritage Month is celebrated each year in November. It is a time to celebrate the traditions, languages, and stories of Native American and Alaska Native communities, and ensure their rich histories and contributions continue to thrive with each passing generation. This November, we celebrate the culture and heritage of these remarkable Americans who deeply enrich the quality and character of our communities. The city of Menlo Park respectfully acknowledges the Alonee Peoples, the original inhabitants of what is now the San Francisco Peninsula. Here to accept the proclamation is Cultural Director of Association of Rama Tush Alonee, Greg Castro.
Good evening. Greetings, relatives and allies. My name is Greg Castro, Totoloslinin, Rumson, and Rama Tush Alonee, three lineages of Central California indigenous to this area, and Culture Director of the Association of Rama Tush Alonee that promotes and protects the ancient culture of the Rama Tush people who have been here for thousands of years indigenous to the San Francisco Peninsula. I'm very honored to accept on behalf of our tribal chair Jonathan Cordero and our Rama Tush community this proclamation, and appreciate your consideration and respect and honoring of our culture that has been here for thousands of years.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Our next proclamation is Item E2, 150-year anniversary of the first incorporation of the city of Menlo Park. City Clerk Heron, can you please call for public comment on Item E2?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Proclamation E2, 150-year anniversary of the first incorporation of the city of Menlo Park, if you are participating in person, a speaker card at that back table can be completed and brought to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. Seeing no hands or cards, this will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation Continuing, seeing no hands, no cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Today, we recognize 150-year anniversary of the first incorporation of Menlo Park, named by Irish settlers Dennis J. Oliver and D.C. McGlynn, who constructed wooden gates with tall arches which the city reproduced in 2019 in partnership with the Menlo Park Historical Association. Facing the intersection of Ravenswood Avenue and Alma, this proclamation is in celebration of 150 years of Menlo Park and in deepest gratitude to the Menlo Park Historical Association for their steadfast stewardship of the history of our community. Here to accept the proclamation is Vice President of the Menlo Park Historical Association,
Good evening. I'm Sandra Pichaud from the Menlo Park Historical Association, and appreciate so much this proclamation. This marks the first time Menlo Park became incorporated. Actually, in 1874 was the first incorporation of Menlo Park, and they did so so they could get money to repair the roads. It wasn't until 53 years later that Menlo Park incorporated again. So in 2027, I'll be back again for another proclamation. Thank you very much.
Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items F1, a resolution to approve the revised San Mateo County Operational Area Emergency Services Organization, JPA; Item F2, receiving and filing the investment portfolio; Item F3, executing an amendment for city building security camera system; F4, accepting the Coleman and Ringwood Avenue transportation study and adopting a resolution of support for the implementation of a one-way pilot on Coleman Avenue; F5, appropriation of unassigned funds for the construction contingency for the Bellhaven Community Campus Clean Energy Infrastructure Project; and F6, waiving and adopting an ordinance amending the municipal code sections related to stopping, parking, and standing for vehicles. If you are in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. Okay, currently have two speakers on item F4. So this will be the final call for public comments on our consent calendar items F1 through F6. So anyone wishing to speak on the consent calendar, now's the time to raise that hand. Pressing star nine if you're calling in or completing a speaker card. Okay, so it looks like we have a total of three speakers. And I will start with our two in-person speakers speaking on item F4 with Sarah Philippic, followed by Francesca Sarge.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, so much. I did write an email, and so I will save most of the comments that were in the email for you guys to review in detail. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things for everyone. One, I know that these things do get publicized and people do miss them, but I do live in the neighborhood of Coleman Avenue and Santa Monica, and I can tell you that at least of everyone that I've checked with and people in the apartments there, there's a lot of people that have no idea that this proposal is going on to do the one-way street and to take away the parking from a side of Coleman. And I've in fact had neighbors tell me that their building manager for the Coleman Place Apartments was not aware of this proposal either. So I'm a little concerned that the word has not gotten out, not to your fault, but it just has not, and people are not aware of the proposals that are in this item. Secondly, I just wanted to mention that the one-way at Coleman Avenue seems excessive given a lot of the data that the report from the county showed. I detail that in my email, but things have gotten better as far as accidents, not worse in the last 10 years as they've shown. And I know this is primarily a school time issue to try to get the kids to school on time when it gets congested. That's two hours of the day, Monday through Friday, only during school days. And I can tell you that Coleman Avenue is not this crazy, really difficult road and dangerous the other times of the year. So this just seems really extreme to make it a one-way and have no parking on one side 24/7 as opposed to maybe during school commute hours, because it will impact the people in those apartments who have no other alternatives for street parking. So just want you to consider maybe some less extreme measures going to the county to start with. I think the stop sign at Santa Monica is brilliant. We definitely need that. It is confusing. I think other stop signs on the county road would be great. Have a stop sign at Berkeley. Have a stop sign at Arlington. That will definitely slow people down if they have to stop in each of those places. Have no turn signs or, like I said, during school commute hours. But I really hope you reconsider going for the one-way and the no parking 24/7 as the first solution to this problem, particularly since the one-way was not even one of the pilot items that was, that the report noted had any support. And I note that in my email as well. So I know everybody's trying to get density and housing issues resolved, but this is an example of a dense housing area, and to cut off people's routes to and from work and from school, and to create congestion on the other routes around this high-density housing area just doesn't give me a lot of faith in us continuing to build high-density housing and dealing with these congestion and other problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Francesca Sarge, followed by Kevin Rennie. And as a reminder for our in-person speakers, please do get near the mic so we can hear you. Sarah, you did a fabulous job. Great example. Francesca, go right ahead.
Hi, good evening to the council members. Thank you all so much, looking at you all. You've spent a lot of time on this Coleman Avenue issue. Some people in there may not be aware that I think the last meeting was three hours studying this particular issue, and that there was a lot of feedback for you. And what I want to do tonight is let you know that my name is Francesca Segre. I serve as the president of the Menlo Park City School District Board. I am, however, tonight not representing the board, but representing myself, a member of the Menlo Oaks community, and a parent. My kids bike down Coleman to get to MA. I walk my dog there daily. I'm very familiar with it. And I really just want to thank this council for taking really bold action, showing wonderful leadership and courage in what's a sensitive situation. But what you have done so far with your letter and with this resolution is you're putting children and schools first. You're making that your priority, and I just want to applaud you for seeing that, because there are a lot of different priorities that are out there. As many of us know, the problem on this particular street is that there are no contiguous bike lanes, there are no bike lanes, there are no contiguous sidewalks, and that bikers and pedestrians are sharing the road with cars. On October 22nd, you listened carefully to the 100 details of the 150-page report and the study, and you went ahead with the letter on the one-way pilot. You've crafted this careful resolution. You are advocating for a safe pilot, and I just want you to keep your moral clarity, know that you have support. The one-way pilot is politically viable. It gives us new information. It's just a pilot. It's relatively low cost. It's going to give parents and children an opportunity to try a new way to school, something that so far many of them have been afraid to try. We've seen the BPAC support this solution. We have seen administrators from the Menlo Park City School District and also Sequoia support this district. And you have done your homework, and now is the time to finish the job, take the action, make real change, and give our children a safe route to school. They deserve it. You can make it happen. And know that all the homework you've done, you've got the support. You have the support of parents and many, many people in this community, and I just want to thank you. Go forth. Keep doing what you were doing. It's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Kevin Rennie. And Kevin, if you can let us know which item you're speaking on?
Mayor Taylor, city council staff, I'm going to speak on F4 and F6.
All right.
Yep, okay. Thanks so much. Yep, I'm Kevin Rennie, a resident of the Willow's neighborhood, a parent of two kids attending upper and lower Laurel schools, an avid cyclist. First off, would like to acknowledge the amount of work that's gone into this over the last two years. In addition, the Ringwood Coleman project has been going on for over 20 years. There's been outreach through those 20 years, and as of recently, the last two years, we've had meetings at MA. We've had, I personally, well, with the BPAC Commission, have actually walked the street on one of the mornings. I feel like there's a significant amount of support to go with this. There's been significant oversight, and just to ring true what the previous speaker was so eloquent saying is, "We have your back. We want to see this through. We want a safer community. This is necessary. We can't let another generation go by putting themselves at risk every day." I ride my bike with my five-year-old every day, the lower Laurel. We have to stop and wait for cars to pull out in front of us because they can't see us because there's cars parked on the side of the road. So again, I urge you to move forward as quick as possible. And then for F6, this bill, AB 413, is also significant. I would like to see red curbs on 20 feet in every direction for the crosswalks, for the driveways, and this will also help implement safety for our children and just active transport across the community. Thank you so much. I yield back.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next speaker will be Ross Silverstein. And Ross, if you can also let us know which item you are speaking on?
Hi, city council. I'm going to speak regarding Item F4 and Coleman Avenue. I want to echo the previous two comments on how much support there is and has been for not only making Coleman safer, but also specifically the proposed pilot that city council approved last meeting, the last time this came up for discussion. I just want to quickly remind, without taking too much time, remind everyone how many families are waiting for Coleman to be safer so that they themselves can bike to school or even just bike to do errands, and that would reduce a lot of the traffic concerns along that roadway. And it's not only young kids, it's also a lot of high schoolers who go to Menlo Atherton High. And then lastly, I just want to recall something that Councilwoman Woolison said the last time this was up for discussion, is that inaction is a decision in and of itself. It's a decision that the status quo is acceptable and that the years-long efforts of residents attempting to make Coleman safer will continue to be ignored. And I implore you guys to continue this progress that we're currently making, and hopefully we'll finally get to a resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, and that does look to conclude our speakers on our consent calendar. And just as a reminder for our in-person speakers, if we can refrain from any clapping or noises after a speaker has finished, just so everyone feels comfortable enough to state their opinions and their support or opposition for an item. And with that, I can return this to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. And at this time, is there a motion and a second on the table to approve the consent
So I'd ask that we bifurcate F1 through F5 from F6. Since I voted against the first waiving of the reading of the ordinance, I think I should vote against the second waiving of the reading. And so I can make a motion for approval of 1 through 5.
Okay.
And we can go from there.
Mayor Taylor, I'm happy to second. And I do want to add that this is a topic that we have been discussing for quite a while. And for those who are tuning in now on the Coleman pilot topic, and it is a pilot, we encourage you to, I encourage you to look back at our last meeting and the robust discussion we had on this topic, but I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by city council member Woolison to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item F6.
And so just adding on to Councilmember Woolison's point, I think it's important to highlight with regards to the one-way, that is on the county portion of the road, and so that we are not the ultimate deciders there. We are making a recommendation, and certainly it's valid to call into question if you disagree with that recommendation, but ultimately whether that road is made one-way at that point is, will be determined by the county boards of supervisors. And related to some of the other actions, there is still much work to be done in connection with a final decision on those other actions, specifically removal of the parking, other sort of road measures like speed humps and the stop sign at Santa Monica. And so again, those are, those are within the city's purview, but there is other work that needs to be done before a final decision can be made there, and the one-way will be made by the county board of supervisors. So, sorry, I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate the additional clarification. Any further city council question on discussion on items F1 through F5? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. Thank you, and the motion passes unanimously. And with that, we can return it to Item F6 for a motion and a second.
I'm happy to move.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Woolison and a second by city council member Nash to waive the second reading of an ordinance amending Title 11 of the existing municipal code related to stopping, parking, and standing for vehicles. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs and City Councilmember Dorr dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. Moving on to our regular business, regular business items, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is G1, consider and adopt a resolution declaring downtown parking plazas 1, 2, and 3 as exempt surplus land, and provide feedback and authorize staff to release a request for qualifications for affordable housing on parking plazas 1, 2, and 3 to implement Housing Element Program H4. Here to introduce this item is our principal planner, Tom Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the city council. I'm Tom Smith, Principal Planner in the Community Development Department, and with me is Community Development Director Deanna Chow and Interim Economic Development Manager Fran Dean. So this evening's presentation will provide a brief overview of the draft request for qualifications for affordable housing on downtown parking plazas 1, 2, and 3, and the disposition process to construct housing on those sites. For some background, in the spring of 2021, the city started work on its required general plan housing element update for the planning period from 2023 to 2031 to create opportunities for nearly 3,000 new housing units across the city to meet our regional housing needs allocation, which we refer to as RENA. The Housing Element identifies sites for housing, and it also includes goals, policies, and programs to preserve, improve, and develop housing for all income categories and affirmatively further fair housing throughout the community. And in March 2024, the State Department of Housing and Community Development certified the city's housing element. I'll give just a brief outline of the history of the housing element, how sites were chosen, and some of the outreach that was conducted over the past couple of years before getting more into the specific program that's being discussed here. I know some are tuning in just for the first time or have recently heard about the effort, and so I wanted to provide a little bit of background there. So you can see in this table on this slide, compared to the prior eight years from 2015 to 2023, the city's RENA increased almost 350% from 655 units to nearly 2,500 units. And this table shows the number of units at each income category that the state expects the city to plan for. So there's very low-income, low-income, moderate, and above-moderate housing needs that have been identified for the city, and so we have to plan for the sites and strategies in order to make that a reality through 2031. Specifically for the downtown parking lots project, the particular number of interest in this table is the very-low-income row, and that shows for 2023 to 2031, 740 units that are needed during that planning period. So what does very-low income mean in terms of affordability in Santa? So what does very low income mean in terms of affordability in San Mateo County? In 2024, the area median income is one hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars for a household of four. So very low income, um, would be approximately fifty percent of that amount, and that would be nearly a hundred thousand dollars, um, for a fam- for, for a household of four. Accounting for developments already in the pipeline, the city has either in planning or under construction uh, about fifteen hundred new affordable units at various income levels. But those, uh, those units in the pipeline are not enough, um, to make up for the needs that we have through 2031, and so the city, uh, went through a process of identifying a number of additional sites in order to, to meet those numbers. Just to give you an overview, a brief idea of what kinds of factors went into site selection. What we go through is sort of filtering out sites. Ideally, they would be between a half an acre to ten acres. When I mentioned affirmatively furthering fair housing earlier, the idea is about distribution throughout the city, not concentrating housing in any one particular area, but, um, applying it equally, or applying it, um, throughout the city and council districts two through five. As we know, there was, uh, quite a bit of development in District One, um, and that's still going on. And so for this housing element cycle, the idea was to, um, spread those development opportunities through Districts two through five. We're also looking for sites that are close to transit, schools, um, shops, other services that people need on a daily basis. Um, and then we had to consider the realistic development potential for a site. So in terms of whether or not there's a long-term lease that's occupying the site that would go beyond 2031, then the state would say that that's not really a viable site for housing development because, um, of the current uh, occupancy of, of a particular site or building. And then we needed to plan for thirty dwelling units per acre of density at a minimum, particularly for, uh, low and very low-income housing. So I apologize, this is a small map here, but we did identify a total of sixty-nine sites throughout the city. And as I mentioned, most of those are in council districts two through five, so there are sites all the way in Sharon Heights. There are a number of sites in the downtown El Camino Real area, along Middlefield Road, Willow, um, and then just a couple of sites over in the office, uh, zoning district that is, um, off of Marsh, uh, in that area. And these sites were identified, uh, through the process with HCD, determined to be adequate sites in order to address our housing needs at the various income levels. Briefly, just to zoom in here a little bit. At the end of last year, in December 2023 and, and January of 2024, we went through a number of zoning changes that were required to be implemented in order to, uh, make development potential, uh, realistic for these sites. And so there were a number of different strategies that were used, and that includes, you can see in the green, that would be allowing residential opportunities in existing commercial and retail districts. So as I mentioned, looking at the office district, uh, closer to the Bayfront area, some of the development along Willow Road, Middlefield Road. Um, and then in the pink, you can see there was a increase in residential density around the downtown in the R three apartment zone for lots greater than ten thousand square feet. And then we also increased residential densities in the specific plan area downtown and along El Camino Real. And those efforts extended, uh, to Sharon Heights. A number of properties along Sand Hill Road also were, um, subject to those rezonings to allow residential uses. And so throughout the entire housing element process, um, there was a variety of different types of outreach that were conducted beginning in May 2021, with the understanding that the city needed to have, um, an adopted housing element by January thirty-first of 2023. And so, over the course of the year and a half, after we received our, our arena numbers and had sort of the, the basic building blocks to begin planning the housing element, the city held fifty-six different community meetings, including public hearings, focus groups, pop-up outreach events at the downtown farmer's market and in Bellhaven. There were project galleries with boards that were outlining the project of the city's public library locations. There were public notices posted in the newspaper. Um, and then there were also newsletters and letters that were distributed to all residents and property owners in 2021, 2022, and 2023, outlining the different strategies to meet the city's housing needs and including, uh, the strategy to consider the downtown parking lots for housing. So those are some of the examples of the various ways that the city communicated, um, all of the strategies that were proposed as part of the housing element process. Looking specifically at the downtown parking lots project, um, the program that we're discussing this evening, a mailer was sent to business and property owners in the downtown area prior to the August twenty-seventh study session where the city council discussed a feasibility study that looked at all eight of those, uh, parking lots, and then where the Surplus Land Act options were reviewed. And then following the study sec- s- study session, a second mailer was sent to downtown business and property owners, and the city's, um, interim economic development manager went door-to-door among the ground-floor businesses to distribute information about, and an informational meeting that was held last week and then this, the, this evening's, um, council meeting. So as I mentioned, uh, last week on November fourteenth, the city held an informational and listening session for downtown property owners and business owners and received feedback. Uh, we had over forty in attendance at that session, and I'll give, uh, a, a little bit of an overview of that feedback we received later in the presentation, um, and it's also, uh, summarized in the staff report. Now moving into the actual program from the housing element, uh, related to the downtown parking lots, just to give some background there. Program H four G in the housing element prioritizes development of at least three hundred and forty-five very low-income units on the city-owned downtown parking lots. The downtown parking lots are important to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation because the land is already under city ownership, and we know that in San Mateo County, um, land is one of the most expensive aspects of a project and, and can be a big barrier to affordable housing development. Um, so by utilizing city-owned land, we can potentially reduce the cost of development. And, um, these lots are also located in a high resource area that's near transit, shops, um, and other resources around the downtown. The housing element outlines an ambitious timeline, and there are key milestones that include a feasibility study, which was completed in August of this year and reviewed on August twenty-seventh at, at a city council meeting. Staff presented information regarding all eight parking plazas, information in terms of easements, utilities, title report issues, things like that, and potential factors to consider in selecting which parking lots, um, to proceed with for affordable housing development. And then the next step that's identified in the housing element timeline is issuance of an RFQ in 2024, which is where we are now. And then future steps listed in the housing element include completing entitlements in 2025 and developing, constructing those units by 2027. Um, I would add here that programs in the housing element are required, uh, by HCD to have very specific timing to assist in tracking and monitoring our programs. So many of those items in the housing element do call out specific, uh, timelines, dates that, that we are supposed to report on our progress in achieving these programs. When the housing element was being developed, we received a number of public comments and feedback at the time that indicated that it was considered a priority program. Um, and so we've sought to bring the RFQ for action this year according to the timeline that was set in the, the housing element. Based on the feasibility study, um, city council directed staff to focus on parking plazas one, two, and three as an outcome of the August twenty-seventh study session. And so we're here tonight to talk a little bit more about that. This is a map of all eight of the parking plazas. As you can see, um, on the right-hand side, El Camino Real is running up and down, uh, that, that slide, and then Santa Cruz Avenue is shown in green through the middle, and so we're talking about the three parking plazas that are north of Santa Cruz Avenue. One is sort of in a pink color, um, and then two and three are in a bluish-green color. Key findings from the feasibility study indicated that parking plazas one, two, and three have the highest redevelopment potential and, and the least number of, uh, potential barriers for housing, affordable housing development. And keeping in mind the three hundred and forty-five unit goal from the housing element, these three lots could accommodate over four hundred eighty-three units, uh, using the bo- bonus level density. Um, so we could exceed potentially that, that goal from the housing element just by using the city's zoning in place. And then use of the city's affordable housing overlay and state legislation to encourage the construction of affordable housing could potentially produce even more units on the site as part of a development program. One outcome that we heard from city council meeting in, in August is that any new development on the parking lots should balance housing goals with downtown parking needs. Um, study, the feasibility study recommends including some level of replacement parking as part of any new development to make up for lost public parking spaces on the plazas. And as of now, there is a downtown parking study that's underway. The city is doing that in partnership with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Um, and the findings of that study are anticipated to be available in summer of next year. So as, as we receive more data from that study, as we have things to share, um, we would certainly integrate that into the overall process for the projects. As I mentioned earlier, we have had a number of recent meetings, um, so I wanted to give a, an overview of the types of feedback that we've received. On November sixth, we went to a housing commission meeting and shared, uh, sort of the parameters of the draft RFQ. And the feedback that we heard there was to consider downtown parking needs, but also to keep in mind that there are other modes of travel, including people who may be able to walk in the downtown, um, cycling, uh, use of the Caltrain, um, other transit opportunities. We also heard that we should evaluate potential parking maximums for residents of new affordable housing to set a limit on the number of spaces for, for new residents. And then there was also some feedback to allow commercial ground for you, floor uses, but not to require those as part of a development, um, depending on whether or not, uh, it was financially feasible and beneficial to the overall concept. On November fourteenth, I mentioned that we had a downtown business community meeting. Um, from that, we heard that there was a need to ensure convenient and ample parking downtown, um, including growth to pre-pandemic rates and an added buffer to consider future additional growth, growth above and beyond, uh, the previous peak. We also heard feedback that we should provide adequate parking for any new residents of a development that would be separate, um, from customer and employee needs. There were requests to broaden community engagement and opportunities for dialogue and information as part of the process. Requests to consider other sites to meet the housing element goals. And we did receive a comment that any development, um, needs to consider sufficient, uh, service lanes and loading zones as part of development for, for businesses that are receiving deliveries, perhaps from the rear of the building or out, out front as well. We've had a number of items of community correspondence that have come in over the past few days. To categorize those broadly, we've heard concerns that, uh, regarding changes to parking and how that might affect downtown vitality. Concerns regarding the, um, massing size type of, of housing development that could be constructed downtown. Requests for more outreach and additional time to, uh, consider the, the project. And then we've also had a few letters of support for affordable housing and the housing element implementation. So when a public agency like the city intends to sell or lease land to another entity, that process needs to follow the Surplus Land Act, which is a state law. And the Surplus Land Act includes a very specific process with steps and a method for selecting an affordable housing developer according to state guidelines. But when a city's affordable housing goals align with the state's affordable housing priorities, there are possible exemptions to the state's process, and that allows the city more flexibility to determine what can be developed on those, on those sites. So at, at the August city council meeting, uh, city council directed staff to prepare a Surplus Land Act exemption. And, uh, we've included a resolution as part of the staff report packet that outlines an exemption that would require eighty percent or more of the land area for, to be used for residential uses. Forty percent of the units would need to be for households making sixty percent of area median income or less. And then of those forty percent, half would be for households making fifty percent of area median income or less. So because of the fact that we're looking for very low-income housing on these sites, which is fifty percent of area median income or less, we should be able to achieve that requirement as part of the exemption, um, as long as we're keeping track of an overall development could be a mixed income development. Doesn't necessarily need to be all very low income, but it would need to be, um, forty percent or more of the units would need to be for very low-income, uh, households. And then there would also need to be affordability restrictions placed on a housing development for at least thirty years. As long as, sorry, oh, uh, HCD, uh, reviewed the draft exemption and, uh, confirmed that it could be used, um, with some minor revisions that were incorporated into the, uh, the draft resolution before you this evening. And the draft, uh, exemption resolution includes a clause that any future development would need to comply with the requirements of the exemption in order for that exemption to apply. So in other words, um, the site would default back to the standard Surplus Land Act requirements, and the state process, uh, would, would follow for that property or another exemption would have to be requested, or the parking lot, uh, would remain a parking lot. Um, so there's the clause in there that if, if the development does not comply with the exemption, then it simply reverts back to the current state. The draft RFQ would include some minimum requirements. So those would be creation of at least three hundred and forty-five units affordable to very low-income households, replacement, um, of at least five hundred and six public parking spaces removed for redevelopment of the three parking plazas. That's based on the initial data from the, um, the parking study that I mentioned that's being done in concert with, uh, MTC. Or more for a one-to-one replacement of the existing five hundred fifty-six spaces. And then compliance with applicable development standards in the specific plan. Draft RFQ also includes additional development objectives based on feedback that we received uh, from the August city council meeting. So that would include maximization of affordable units through density bonus provisions, including the AHO, the Affordable Housing Overlay and any state legislation. Um, a proven record of community engagement in the development process, especially engagement with the local business community. Deeper affordability, um, considering the incorporation of extremely low-income units as feasible, uh, a diverse unit mix with an emphasis on multiple bedroom units for families. Incorporation of sustainable design features and creation of public open spaces where possible. So based on the, the staff report, um, and the, the timeline in the program, staff is recommending approval of the Surplus Land Act exemption for parking plazas one, two, and three, um, and requesting that city council provide feedback on the draft RFQ and authorize staff to finalize and issue the RFQ, um, with the idea that this would allow the city to maintain our stated timelines, um, and goals in the housing element and continue to plan for affordable housing development, uh, in the community. In terms of next steps, um, if approved this evening, in early December, uh, we would look to issue the RFQ and then, um, receive any submittals during the winter, early winter of next year. We would bring it, all of those back to city council for review and direction to staff on how to proceed from there, whether it be an additional process. Um, so we're looking at developer qualifications at this point. From there, we could, depending on the responses received, we could proceed to, uh, request for proposals and then ask a- From there, we could, depending on the responses received, we could proceed to a request for proposals and then ask a subset of developers that are deemed qualified for more particular information on in terms of what they would develop on the sites. But at this point, at least the RFQ is really looking for developer experience and ability to enact a project. And then in terms of the surplus land act exemption, that would be sent to the Department of Housing and Community Development. When a qualified developer is selected to proceed with the project at a future date. With that, I thank you for your time and return it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that presentation. And just want to check in with the council first to see if there are any clarifying questions before we take public comment. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I I've asked this question before, but just want to double confirm, so appreciate that the the exemption are from the surplus doesn't get sent to HCD until like there's an identified developer. But the council action tonight does adopt a resolution indicating exemption from the surplus land act. And so to what extent is is that an action that that commits the city to a certain series of events from that point on? Like separate from what we've indicated with regards to the housing element. Is there some action the city council could make tonight that could not be undone by or or ignored by by a future council?
So I'd say generally, taking action this evening on these things, city would not be committed locked in to a development until the time that a developer would be chosen to implement a project. So if you if you want to think about it in terms of reversing any actions, there's nothing that would specifically commit the city, although I think we would potentially want to consider the message sent to the development community if if we're sending forward an action, asking for information and then and then retracting that. So that would be one consideration, but there's nothing that would prevent the city from moving back a step or two.
Yeah, but in a future date, if we're retracting, then we probably aren't that invested in what the developer community thinks. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other clarifying questions? Councilmember Dore.
Thank you. I I appreciate you sharing a bit of the timeline for the immediate next step if you were to take the actions recommended by staff tonight of in the winter, reviewing the submittals of developer qualifications. And I'm curious if if you could share a ballpark for, say, we say the council, because I won't be here. Say the council reviews the qualifications, asks for proposals. What is the earliest or what is the ballpark range for when the council would be looking at and the community could give input on an actual proposal that was suggesting housing and parking and such?
We would need to, so we would bring back any responses that we received to the RFQ to the city council. And I think we would have a sort of a staff recommendation from that. And then we would ask council direction on the next step from there, depending on the type of responses, the number of responses received, the level of information received. We would ask council whether to proceed with engaging a specific developer in more detail. Or there could be an additional step added with an RFP where we say to a select group of developers that respond. Now come forward with some more detailed proposals for us to react to. But we would leave that to the council to decide after seeing the responses we would get.
Thank you. And in this initial RFQ, staff laid out a few high level goals for what could be included there. Could you explain why those are high level and what information would follow if we were to go forward with an RFP that was more specific?
Sure, at this point, with the RFQ, the idea is to get a sense of the developers' experience, their financial capacity, how they may structure financing for a project like this and getting an idea of of what they would incorporate into that project. Making them aware of the different basic parameters that are included in the housing element program and then the additional items like the replacement public parking that that we've been that we've discussed. And so that would be kind of the first first test, if you will. And then from there, with the proposals, I think we would get into more of, I don't want to say extremely detailed plans, but we would be getting some sort of general site plan, massing diagrams, like a sense of what a development could potentially look like on those on those lots. And then that would also provide a a sense of how many units are actually would be constructed, how many parking spaces would be needed. Things that we could react to more concretely than just the general very high level principles in the program.
Thank you.
Are there any other clarifying questions from city council? Okay, council councilmember Nash.
So just reading from the report. It says that part of the RFQ is to create, to offer for the encouraging developers to offer creative solutions to integrate affordable housing, replacement public parking and other complementary uses. So we will get some information beyond the developers.
Right, there should be some level of understanding of the needs for replacement public parking, how that interfaces with the residential parking that that would be planned as part of the project, parking management on a site, those kinds of things we should be getting at least a narrative indicating they understand that.
At this time, City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So in order to gauge the number of speakers that we have on this item, which is item G1 related to downtown parking plazas surplus land. If you are participating in person, please go ahead, complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. So again, we are calling for public comment on our regular business item G1. Related to downtown parking plazas and the surplus land act. So again, if you are in person, now is the time to bring me a speaker card. And if you are online, go ahead and raise that hand feature or press star nine if you're calling in. Appreciate everyone's patience as I just kind of queue everyone up. Okay, so this will be the last and final call for public comment on item G1. All right. So Mayor Taylor, we currently have a total of 38 speakers. So again, I I know we can just refrain from any of the.
Is that all virtual or all in person?
This is a combination of both.
Okay, okay. Well, at this time, we'll do two minutes per person.
Thank you.
For public comment. Thank you.
All right, so our first speaker will be Anna Chow, followed by Adriana Silva.
Good evening. I'm Anna Chow. My husband and I are the owners of Cheeky Monkey Toys Downtown.
I remember the city clerk haring just stating that if we could not clap, thank you.
So I'm going to start by saying that I don't think putting housing downtown on the downtown parking lots is a great idea. However, I think being out of compliance with the state housing mandate is far worse. If this is the, if this project is the only way to meet our housing mandate, then we need to work together as a community to make sure that the entire lifespan of the project from planning to completion is done impeccably. And what does that mean to me? First and foremost, open, honest, productive communication. Identify the challenges and find solutions together. Those main challenges, and I hope that you consider some of these in your RFQ and RFPs. Ensuring that the city maintains its power to dictate the mess haves from any developer. We need to ensure that the project includes public parking equal to or more than what we have now. We need to ensure that traffic patterns are studied and remedied. We need to ensure there is support for local businesses to stay open during construction, both operationally and economically. We need to ensure that the construction, the during construction, the air quality during the construction phase doesn't put people at risk that work and live downtown. With only a 25 foot variance between between the rear of our store and where the development may start, I have concerns about that. Finally, we need to ensure that the city commits to improving and supporting downtown right now. We cannot defer maintenance projects like landscaping, sidewalk and parking lot cleaning and repairs just because this project is in the pipeline. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Adriana Silva, followed by Paul Kik.
Good evening, city council. Bottom line upfront, do not focus on the on the raw number of parking spaces. I'm a resident of Menlo Park. I live with my wife and two kids a quarter mile away from the proposed project site. And I want to speak to the downtown business owners, patrons, fellow neighbors and others who are concerned about the potential negative impacts of changing the amount, type or location of parking spaces in these lots. Whether it's 546, 504 or 600 parking spaces, the parking needs of your customers cannot be reduced to a single number. Changing this one number, the amount of parking spaces, will change our routines and habits, but it will not discourage people from coming to our downtown. Our city parking lots are living parts of of our communities. They ebb and flow with the rhythms of the day. Workers show up early to open up shop, patrons flow in to run errands, nearby workers come in for the lunch rush. In the evening and afternoon, people do their errands after work in school and they come in for dinner on Santa Cruz Ave. Yes, change will happen, but we have to remember that public parking is a community resource. Just like our parks, libraries and schools, it must be managed attentively and intentionally. At hand is a complex proposal that has many stakeholders. Do not be seduced by the idea of a simple solution to a complex problem. Our city will not be destroyed because parking is slightly more inconvenient downtown. Maintaining the raw number of parking spaces that we currently have fixed in perpetuity is not the key to a successful Menlo Park. I repeat, do not focus on the raw number of parking spots. Focus on parking management strategies such as dynamic pricing and code enforcement. These are tried and true methods that many cities with small vibrant downtowns already work on, so we could do the same here in Menlo Park. So let's reframe the question and the concerns that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Paul Kik, followed by David Royce.
My name is Paul Kik. I live over by Nealon Park and I walked over here tonight just to save parking spaces for some people who are in this room. I really wanted to worry about the parking problem here. It's a much bigger issue than that. We need to send state legislature people who will stop the ridiculous affordable housing procedures that they're making all of state municipalities uphold. I'm not trying to be unfair to anyone. I'm just saying the housing things that the state is forcing, because we don't want to pay $50,000 a month fine. They're forcing us to do things that we don't want to do in our local community. I really hope that our city council, of whom none ran on a let's get rid of the downtown parking lot platform. Do not make this Menlo no park zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And again, if we could refrain, just so everyone feels comfortable enough to speak, thank you. Next is David Royce, followed by Kurt Conroy.
Excuse me, Mayor Taylor and councilmembers. My name is David Royce. I live on Creek Drive in Menlo Park. I'm here tonight to urge you to adopt the resolution to move forward. Declaring the downtown parking plazas as exempt surplus land. I'm speaking as a 28 year resident of Menlo Park and as a homeowner in the Allied Arts neighborhood near downtown. I believe that many of the opponents of the process are likewise longtime residents and property owners, and my comments here are as much to them as they are to you. The reason we are here tonight is because we've made it so difficult over the last 50 years to build new housing on our most desirable communities, including Menlo Park. The state of California has finally managed or has finally recognized this crisis for what it is and has strengthened the process, requiring all communities to identify locations for new housing, as we heard tonight. The city council and their staff have made heroic efforts to comply with this process, including identifying the downtown parking plazas as highly desirable locations for the development of affordable housing. Given the long and public process leading up to the state's approval of Menlo Park's housing element, no one can say that the proposal to develop the downtown parking lots as affordable housing was either rushed or hidden. I thank the members of the council and their staff for all the work they've done in this process. In addition to speaking tonight on my own behalf, I'm also here to speak on behalf of a group that is unlikely to be represented at this meeting, the future residents of the planned housing. These people are not here because they're in their cars driving home to Tracy Modesto, Morgan Hill and so forth. They're not here because they're taking of your sick, taking care of your sick grandmother at Stanford Hospital. They're not here because they're starting a second shift washing dishes at Left Bank. These future neighbors probably spent the day cleaning your house, mowing your lawn, teaching your children, policing your neighborhood, making your espresso, selling your hardware, serving you lunch and so on. These future neighbors are also future customers of our local grocery stores, our farmer's market, our bookstores, our restaurants, our entertainment venues. Even though these future neighbors are not here, they deserve a voice in this process. I'm personally looking forward to meeting these new neighbors and welcoming them to our neighborhood. Wouldn't the world be a better place if we're all a little bit more like Mr. Rogers? Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kurt Conroy, followed by Claire Doucet, Doucet Dicker. So sorry.
Mayor Taylor, city council members, thank you for your service to the community. I'm Kurt Conroy, Menlo Park, homeowner since 1989. And I was the housing, a member of the housing commission, 2019 to 2021. I want to express my opposition to the city possibly allowing affordable housing to be built on the city's parking lots. Menlo Park is a small town compared to its neighbors. Much of its charm is due to the open air and sunlight that are provided by its surface parking lots. Building on these lots will take away and ruin that which makes Menlo Park special. Especially for the senior members of our community, for home parking and cramped indoor garages poses especially for the senior members of our community, for home parking, and cramped indoor garages poses particular challenges. While I believe building on any of the lots will interfere with local commerce, particularly opposed to the idea of building on the lots between Santa Cruz Avenue and Menlo Avenue, as these lots are used for the city's farmer's market, which I believe is a vital service to our community. Our downtown is the gem of our community. High-density housing simply doesn't belong there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Claire Dusettecker, followed by Eduardo Pugari-Lopart.
Good evening. Councilmember's name is Claire Dusettecker. I grew up here. My parents moved to Menlo Park in two thousand and three, and I went to school my whole life here. I moved away and recently came back. Should I get closer? I just want to say that when I first heard about this proposal, I thought it was the most amazing thing I've ever heard Menlo Park do. I thought it was awesome that we're gonna build housing in a place that was, people would want to live, that would be affordable, people would live here, for people who can't afford the average, or the median median value of an owner-occupied home at two million dollars, which most of the state cannot do. I think it's great to prioritize future neighbors, as this previous speaker said, instead of thinking about the people who currently live here, and thinking for the future, instead of thinking about the past. I did some research about what affordability meant and looking at what the Menlo Park minimum wage at sixteen seventy, which is great, because it's so much more than the federal minimum wage of seven twenty-five. Anyway, if someone were to get a job at Peet's Downtown, which I think we all love coffee, and they worked at that minimum wage in Menlo Park full-time, their monthly takeaway would be two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars, and that's right now, according to census.gov, the amount, the medium rent for, the medium rent cost in Menlo Park. So if they were working full-time in this city, they could not afford to live. And I think projects like this and future-looking is what's gonna allow Menlo Park to thrive going forward and allow people who aren't making hundreds of thousands of dollars to also live here and enjoy this beautiful place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Eduardo Pugari-Lopart, followed by Brim Fremmell, with donated time from Caitlin Dark.
Good evening, City Mayor and Council. I wanted to speak strongly in favor of the staff recommendation. I think that it's a great opportunity to add housing and affordable housing, and also to revitalize the downtown and bring newer generations into the city. I think that if we do a good job, we can improve a lot. I think that the parking lots today can look much better. We can add much more green space around that. Working with a developer on that space, I think, is a great opportunity. And also, a quick reminder that the state mandate exists. I live in the Willows. I've been there since nineteen ninety-eight. Eighty Willow Road is there because they could not submit a housing element that was approved in time. I think we have to be careful about following up on our commitments and following on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Bill Fremmell, with donated time from Caitlin Dark, and then Vanessa Honey.
Good evening. I'm Bill Fremmell. I live on Winter Drive. Been a resident there for fifty-two years. I wanted you to know that I did talk to Betsy Nash at White Links today, and I appreciated that time. As along with Phil Eubank also enjoyed me in that meeting. I'm really here to concern about the proposal, and I'm against it. At this point in time, I think we really need to step back for at least until the new year and give the city more opportunity to explain to the residents, to the merchants, what the need is, why we're doing it, and what are the other options that are on the table. I feel that the city, as I told Betsy, has done a miserable job in informing everyone of the seriousness of this issue. When I talked to at least a hundred people, maybe two people knew about it, and the residents. There has not been an outreach to the residents. To the merchants, yes. Now, the people love our downtown. It's basically the fabric of our community. It's the center of activity. It's enjoyable. To put in high-rise buildings, ripping out the parking is going to be a disaster downtown. If you're a merchant and you have a business that relies on parking, and now five hundred parking spaces are removed, almost half the inventory in the city, what's gonna happen to those businesses? Do you think the hardware store, Cheeky Monkey, as mentioned, Roma's, Carpatio's, all these restaurants, the paint store, who can go to the post office then, no parking available? There are so many different restaurants, dry cleanings. We talk about these people can live in these, that work downtown, could now live in these buildings. Unfortunately, they'll be able to live in the building, but they won't have a job downtown anymore, because we're going to start a loop, a doomed loop. Because what'll happen, as places close, it becomes unsavory, un-nice to come downtown. People don't want to come downtown if it looks like it's vacant, if there's no parking, and you gotta drive around and around to find a parking spot. So what happens is people quit coming, the businesses go down, the doomed loop starts, and that means the downtown continues to deteriorate. Now, how did we get to this position? We have merchants, and when we go back to the nineteen forty-seven, when this whole downtown plaza was created, the whole idea was that, okay, we'll buy all these little home backyards. We'll connect all these backyards and put in parking plazas. That happened to our church, Menlo Church, which was downtown. Well, they paid us three thousand dollars for the land, and here's the kicker. On the way out, you had to pay thirteen thousand dollars if you wanted to stay. So the church had a budget of ten thousand dollars a year. There's one year's budget. It was through a community service drive, community that raised the ten thousand dollars to pay for the church. But here's a homeowner who's got some money for the backyard. Now they're gonna be having charged for this exorbitant amount of money that they have to pay to the city, and the purpose of paying to the city is to build parking garages. I mean, parking lots. So the tenant, the owner of the house, has to sell his house, sells it to developer. The developer has a covenant with the city. We're gonna build this retail building because we're going to have parking that will supply and support our city. One last quick thing. Has the city considered, seriously considered, using the free land that we're standing on right now around this, in this civic center, not the park, the civic center, has two... My time up? Well, anyway, we have two parking lots in the civic center that are at the equivalent of two plazas twos. Why aren't we looking at that? It's free land. The free land of five hundred parking spots is way worth... Five hundred parking spots equates to forty million dollars to replace. That is not free land. Now, the city of Menlo Park has free land. There's a building, there's a vacant lot, basically, between the library and the gatehouse. That is never used. Walk by there anytime. You'll never see anybody there. It's a big parcel. We could put public, we could put housing there. We could put it over the parking lots. We can take Alma and reconfigure Alma Road. If Alma Road goes along the railroad tracks, but it bends, it becomes quite wide between the street and the railroad track fence. And when you get to past Burgess, it goes from a two-lane to a six-lane street. Strangest thing. There's a six-lane that goes to a dead end. Why can't the city shrink Alma? Go ahead and build tons of housing, and an eight-story building would be acceptable in that area. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Vanessa Honey, followed by Kevin Cunningham, with donated time from Corey Rostad.
Good evening. I'd like to give the gentleman before me part of my time. My name is Vanessa Honey. I'm a real estate broker and certified property manager, and I reside in downtown Menlo Park. I served as the first chairperson of the Mountain View Rental Housing Committee and served two more years on the committee. I support affordable housing. Having managed tens of thousands of project-based Section Eight BMR and other programs, as well as tax credit projects at different set-asides from twenty-five percent to eighty-five percent in most states of the United States for over twenty years. Based on my experience, I do not feel the current proposed locations taking over much-needed parking are suitable for a three-hundred-and-forty-five-unit, four-to-five-story affordable housing development. I just don't think that downtown Menlo Park can sustain such a project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Kevin Cunningham, with donated time from Corey Rostad, followed by Vasile Orros.
Evening, Council. Thank you. My name is Kevin Cunningham, and I am a property owner in downtown Menlo Park. I'm not here as an opponent to affordable housing. We understand the pressure that these cities are on to comply with the state mandates. But I am here tonight to urge the council in the city to slow down and to not vote tonight to designate these three public lots as surplus land and initiate the stated developer selection process that would begin next month with the goal to do entitlements in two thousand and twenty-five. As a side note, the one study that's been done is a traffic study that's gonna be done in two thousand and twenty-five. I'm not sure what that study's gonna be done, if your entitlements are already done. It seems that's sort of lip service. The proposed project to convert the three public lots to four hundred and eighty-three units of low-income housing has far more questions than answers. That is why we encourage the city to slow down and do more sincere reaching out to your constituents. We understand that this recommendation was made at the August twenty-seventh meeting, but the communication since then has been, I would say, odd at best and suspicious at worst. I'd just like to ask the attendees, who knew about this two weeks ago? Who did not know? Folks, that is not appropriate communication to your constituents if that many people were unaware. That's just a fact. There are several assumptions in the plan that are either simply questionable or wrong. The city intends to take the five hundred and fifty-six spots between the three parking lots and construct four hundred and eighty-three units. Yet we've done no material impact studies, one apparent parking study next year. We don't know what the impact is gonna be on traffic, on parking, the timing of construction, the economic impact of residents that make no more than sixty-two thousand dollars in the city, and the loss of parking to existing businesses. Removing the service-level parking would have a crippling impact on the adjacent retailers. Make no mistake on that. There's already roughly a twenty-one percent vacancy rate in downtown, and trying to find a parking spot is tough. What happens when the economy improves? The city stated they will provide "replacement parking," but here's the challenge with that. First of all, we don't know where it would go or where it would be. It was inferred in the meeting on the fourteenth that it would be a very large multi-story garage on another public lot. I can tell you, you're not gonna have your customers that pull in front for their morning coffee, their morning bagel, or a garbage can are gonna be willing to walk three blocks and park on the fifth floor of a parking garage. It will not happen. It's naive for the city to think that it will. This affordable project does not require, oh, the one thing that has not been discussed about that I think is very critical is that the project does not require these developers for affordable to provide any parking at all. So let's talk about getting rid of the five hundred and fifty-six lots and the three lots, adding four hundred and eighty-three units, at least one car. We don't know where the replacement parking's gonna go, and we think it's just all gonna work out? How do we not hit pause and study this with more sincerity? Lastly, of a key point, is the city's authority to declare the parking lot as surplus lands. We legally reject that premise. Pursuant to the downtown study dated August twenty-four, the council's being asked to find that these are no longer necessary and declared surplus land. How can that possibly be possible when they have continued to support the downtown economy and residents for decades and decades? Page four of the study acknowledges that downtown property owners paid into these lots for forty years. The assessed properties have received the long-term, the position of the city is that these property owners have already received enough benefits. That's not true. By law, that statement does not conclude that these benefits have been expired. If the city's attorney believes they've been expired, then we should see that legal letter. It'd be nice to know what date they expired. We believe that these rights belong to the property owners and the customers in perpetuity, because by definition, they are not surplus. They are used daily. I have several concerns here that cover a lot of things. Lack of meaningful impact studies, the myth of replacement parking, how retailers will be crushed. I want to note, just in full disclosure, I own eleven forty-nine Chestnut, the coffee bar. That's arguably one of the most activated retail centers in town. Greg Buckmeister sent an email today to council. They will leave. They've been through this. They've lived it. They cannot stand the construction, the parking. They waited three years for a parklet permit and got denied. They will not stay with replacement parking, period. And if they can't make it, nobody else is gonna make it. Lastly, and I'll be out of here in ten seconds, and I appreciate your time. If the city moves forward, and I said this on the fourteenth, the city is clearly making a conscious decision to take an approach of ready, fire, aim. Let's get the reports later. The half-baked report next year for parking doesn't cut it. So we want to work with the city. We hope that you postpone this vote tonight. If the city disagrees, we will sue the city of Menlo Park to retain our legal rights. As it specifically relates to the surplus land, we hope it does not come to that, but we are prepared to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Vasile Orros, followed by Sean Vendrell.
Hello, my name is Vasile Orros. I'm the owner of Menlo Park Ace Hardware, and I own a property adjacent to the parking structure, and I'm a resident of Menlo from two thousand and seven. I have no words to describe what you guys are trying to do. I talk, I find five days ago what you're trying to pull, and they're telling us all was publicized, residents knows. Hundreds and hundreds of customers, I asked them in the store, nobody knew about it, and they are furious. I know it sounds nice, we have to include everybody, but to propose such an atrocious project in the middle of town, disconsidering all these residents who built this town, you know? I moved to this town because it's quiet and it's nice. My kids cannot afford to live in this town, but I'm not willing to destroy this town to move my kids in downtown. I asked these nice people who worked for the city for twenty years, dude, you live in Menlo Park? No, but we worked for twenty years. Okay, but why do you think you know better than the residents who built this town? Looks like we are worried more about the future residents. Let's accommodate them and really completely ignoring the residents who built this town. And I think you guys, I like, I know all of you, I like you, and I know you put your time for public service, but to do, to get so far ahead and shopping for contractors to bid on the project without even first clear the legality, how this land was taken from the property owners, and if it's surplus land, give them back to them. Second, ask all this community, do they want it? I'm sure, make a vote. I'm sure ninety-nine, ninety percent will be against it. And please serve the entire community, not cave to the Sacramento. What about fighting for us a little bit? Thank you.
If you can please refrain from clapping. Thank you. City Clerk Erin.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Next speaker will be Sean Vendrell, followed by Karen Grove.
Hello, Council. My name is Sean Vendrell. Thank you for the work you do. I know this is really difficult. I'm twenty-nine years old. I live on Florence Lane in a one-bedroom rented unit. I've lived here for four years. When we moved, we said we would live here for one, and then we just kept re-upping our lease, because we love it here. You know this. I think we all know this. We desperately need to build housing. I believe families like mine should be able to live in Menlo Park. I believe families like mine should be able to live in Menlo Park. My wife and I work decent jobs. We rent, but we are committed to the community. We help plan Florence Lane's annual block party. We frequent downtown businesses. We made a neighborhood directory so we could all know each other. And we would like to live in Menlo Park long-term, but right now, we think we're going to be forced to leave when we start having children and need a bigger place. Putting aside my personal feelings, the reasons why I really think we desperately need to build housing, it seems we have an obligation to move quickly to build housing. My understanding of the state mandate is that we have to build 3,000 new housing units in the next seven years. That is, I know you know this, but for everyone here, that is 25% more than we have today. That is an absurd increase in housing. Ideally, we're not in this situation, but we are in this situation. Families like mine can't afford to live here. And it seems like we have a solid option: building housing in downtown, all sorts of new people to frequent the businesses that we have in downtown on a regular basis, like my family does. I implore you to approve building housing in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Karen Grove, followed by Adina Levin.
Here with the visual aids. Good evening. Safety, comfort, confidence, and health all begin at home. Can you hear me? I urge you to move forward with the RFQ to develop deeply affordable housing on city-owned parking lots. I look forward to welcoming new neighbors, returning neighbors who are priced out but may have a chance to return, and I look forward to current neighbors being able to stay in Menlo Park, kind of as we just heard about. It's not just me. I'm with Menlo together, and we've done some outreach, and these are all, these are some of the people who also want us to produce deeply affordable housing near downtown, near transit, near parks, near shops. And as someone else mentioned, they can't always be here because they're working sometimes two, three jobs. So I just brought my wrinkly old petition, which is still current, just to sort of give them a place in the room. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Adina Levin. I am a Menlo Park resident. I live near downtown, and I really love the location because I can, you know, run my errands, go get coffee, and go to the hardware store, and Trader Joe's where the bike racks are always full, you know, without having to drive a car. And there are plenty of people who'd really welcome the opportunity to live in that area that is rich in services and, you know, near public transit as well, and I think it's just a really fantastic place to have affordable housing. And because it is city-owned land, it provides an opportunity that is really unique in terms of being able to allow for deeply affordable housing, which we need to do in order to keep our commitment to our community, to people who live here, to people who want to stay here, and to the state. We do need a strategy to maintain and improve convenient access downtown. I'm really glad that we are doing the study with MTC and to figure out how much replacement parking we will need and what other strategies we can use to help improve access. Next door in Palo Alto, they created a transportation management association and offer transit and also bicycle and other programs for low-income service workers downtown, and they have about a couple 150 people who take advantage of these programs, and they were able to defer building a parking structure because so many people are able to commute not using a car, and that's also helped the employee retention at those businesses. So we should look also, you know, when I go to other cities and they have signs saying where the parking is, that is really great as a customer experience and reduces the stress and helps the convenience. So I'm really glad that we're doing this and hope that we make the specific recommendation about the amount of parking that we need based on the study that we are doing about managing parking and improving access. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Mike Mormos.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, honorable staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, a native, born and raised here, still living here in District 3, recovering homeless teacher, public transit enthusiast, and a commercial property manager by trade, mom of a current fifth grader. Personal comments: I support the exempt public land declaration and the next step to issue notice of availability and furtherance of the RFP process for program H4G. I have been homeless, and many of my staff that I help employ are super commuters. These burdens are not comparable to the burdens that these neighbors have listed and for why we shouldn't be building housing in the parking lot. We owe it to ourselves to welcome our low-income workers to our downtown. Our son is devastated each new summer because another batch of teachers and his friends move away. It is literally heartbreaking and unnecessary. He doesn't like summertime now for this reason. Terrible. Neither do I, actually. When listening to neighbors voice their concerns over this item, I noticed a couple of points in that, one, the possibility of losing parking is somehow more detrimental than adding new residents, especially those who are low-income earners, which doesn't make sense to me. The business model of the downtown businesses is clearly to cater to high-income-earning people, therefore creating some sort of hardship or perceived hardship. And so we get to choose: do we want to go with more builders' remedy projects, those big, high-rise projects, or do we want to say yes to affordable housing on our downtown land? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mike Mormos, followed by Royce Chang.
I think it might be Mike Mormon.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Mike Mormon, my wife and I, Carla, have lived in downtown Menlo Park for over 30 years, raised two kids, love living downtown Menlo Park. We walk downtown to visit all the shops all the time. One thing we've noticed over the years is how many of the shops are boarded up. One gentleman said before it's over 20%. Building low-income housing in downtown Menlo Park is not going to help that situation. It's going to be much worse. It's a fantasy to think a family of four, under $100,000 a year, is going to run over the Drager's for a $40 bottle of Chateau Nuit de Pau. It's not going to happen. They're not going to run the Derby and buy a $4,000 couch. They're not going to go anywhere at rug stores and buy a $10,000 silk rug. They are not going to stimulate downtown Menlo Park. They can't get that money. Actually, many of the teachers, if there's two teachers, a family of four, both if they're married parents, they'll probably make too much money to apply for that housing. They'll be over the $100,000. So they think the teachers are going to move, and they may not. Firemen probably make more than that. They can't move in there either. Their income's too high. So it's not going to help downtown Menlo Park. Killing that parking is going to kill the businesses that do fast business. Coffee shops, as I mentioned before, are dead. You're not going to park in a parking garage and walk down the garage and into the parking, into the coffee store. You're not. If this was a private developer building six-story buildings anywhere in Menlo Park, they could not ram through their development as fast as you're trying to run this to the city. There's no way. If you look at that Springline property, how long did that get through? How many hurdles do they have to go through? How many community outreach meetings do they have to do? Do you want to do this in two months, three months? I never heard about this project until just a couple weeks ago. Most of the people in this audience didn't. You're losing the trust of Menlo Park citizens by running this thing through quick. You're losing the trust. The question is asked about what happens if town council changes, can you back out of this deal? I think there's a reason you're asking that question because I think a lot of you might get voted out next time around. Don't lose the trust of downtown Menlo Park residents and all Menlo Park residents. Give them a chance to speak, see these proposals, before you build six-story buildings that are under parked. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Royce Chang, followed by Rico Rosales.
Can you hear me? Okay. I just wanted to add my voice to the voice of other folks here who've spoken up about our need for more housing, not only here, but, you know, our duty as fellow citizens of California, where we all have to contribute to this housing problem. You know, I am a renter here, did not anticipate staying longer, like a gentleman mentioned earlier, but have grown to really love this place, including many of the businesses. I bet Cheeky Monkey quite frequently, actually. And I just want to ask the folks in this room to be thinking about this problem in more in good faith because we do need more housing if we want to see our future generations be able to live in a place like this and to enjoy it in the way that we are right now. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Rico Rosales, followed by Jim Ekin.
Hi, my name's Rico Rosales, and along with my wife Anne, we've lived in Menlo Park for about 36 years, and I can confidently say that I have parked in those parking lots well over 1,000 times. I do not live in the immediate part of downtown. I live in the hinterlands of central Menlo, and so therefore did not receive any of the notices that have been referred to as having gone to local residents or downtown residents and businesses. I would, I did communicate by email, so I won't repeat any of that, but thank you, Councilwoman Dorr, for responding and advising that the action for tonight is, I understood, to be limited to whether to designate the parking lots as surplus land. I didn't hear the definition of what constitutes surplus land, but my understanding is that it means land that is no longer necessary or useful to the city of Menlo Park. I chafe at the idea that these parking lots, which serve the citizens of Menlo Park, are not necessary or no longer necessary to the residents of Menlo Park. This act upon which we're talking about tonight with surplus land has been around since, I believe, late 1960s. At no time since then has there been any action on the part of Menlo Park to say that these parking lots are surplus and no longer serve a purpose for the residents of Menlo Park. I think for all the reasons that have been stated here, I think they serve a very... Menlo Park should view that question expansively. Is it convenient to park and live, to park in these areas? Is it safe to come to the areas downtown? I'm an attender at Menlo Church. I've been there for 36 years. I got to tell you, folks, just walk around on a Sunday morning and take a look at the traffic flow around the church, and people racing through lights, by the way, of course, none of them are church residents, but just people on their way to Pete's or wherever, and the traffic flows will be disrupted greatly. I believe quality of life, being able, I see a lot of the restaurant owners I know here tonight, we park in those lots to go to their restaurants, to go to the local businesses, and I just don't think that this is surplus land and it ought not to be treated as such by the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jim Ekin, followed by Fred Durbus.
I'm Jim Ekin, and my wife and I own four properties here in Menlo Park. I've owned property here since 1981. I speak in strong opposition to this foolish approach that you're taking. The one thing I want to say is I look at this from a legal standpoint because I'm a lawyer, and I'm going to help the gentleman who owns Coffee Bar sue you because you have made a bunch of assumptions that are simply false. You haven't done your work, and you have really ignored what the law is, in my view. I did take the time to look at the government code for what is surplus land. You don't meet the standard. I also found that the RFQ that you propose has no firm requirement that the developers provide any parking. If it's feasible, it would be nice. That's not supporting your local community. I drive downtown, I walk downtown, I ride my bike downtown, I circulate through all the businesses downtown, including the gentleman who owns the Ace Hardware and the Coffee Bar and a bunch of the other places here. And I need my car from time to time because I'm doing other things for my practice. I moved my practice out of downtown Menlo Park years ago because there wasn't enough parking even then. I had clients who could not come readily. They would be late because there wasn't even parking at that point. Yet you're telling me now that this is surplus land where it's a much worse problem now. When I drive downtown to get my haircut, I spend 10 to 15 minutes looking for a parking place. That's not the definition of surplus land. If you think that the construction process is magically going to create replacement parking, I think the estimate was that you would have two years of construction. How many businesses can survive when there's no replacement parking for two years? I think every one of the downtown businesses will be vacant in that period. I don't think it's going to be just the 25% that we've got already. You're going to have a bankrupt downtown. If you look at what happened to Redwood City when it was a ghost town, you'll have a pretty good example, and it took, what, two decades for that to come back? So I'll leave it with you that if you really want to do this, I'm going to sign up for being the litigator on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Fred Durbus, followed by Lynn McMillan.
Good evening, council members. My name's Fred Durbus. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Menlo Park. I'm originally from Brooklyn, New York, and I've been here a while and love the environment of Menlo Park. I love the open-air nature of it. I think it's the very reason that the folks who rent here or live here, who have stated their love of Menlo Park, feel the same way. While this project has been going on, we've seen a lot of changes in the area. We have armed, and I speak to my opposition to the location of this, to be clear, in downtown Menlo Park. While this process has been going on, we've seen changes in the area that are very concerning. We now have armed guards in the Stanford Shopping Center. We have armed guards outside shops on University Avenue. I feel that this project is going to create significant congestion in the downtown area. I'm concerned about crime that may come with it, where we have to have police officers roaming around the Stanford Shopping Center now. We don't have that in Menlo Park right now, and I don't want to see that. I think there are ways to create affordable housing. I don't think downtown is the place to do it. I don't want this to become downtown Palo Alto, where I'm afraid to walk around at night, get mugged, or shot at. I don't want this to turn into Brooklyn in the 1970s where I grew up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Lynn McMillan, followed by Elizabeth Ford.
Greetings. I have some mundane questions.
Lynn, can you get a little closer to the mic?
I have some mundane questions about this. I'm a longtime resident and a downtown property owner. The family's owned the property for 70 years. In order to achieve the density that you need, this is like 86 units in parking lot one, this building is going to have to be 10 stories right high, correct? Or it can be 10 stories high. Is that correct? You passed a year ago something, you agreed that low-income housing downtown could be 10 stories high. Is that correct?
If you'd like to state your questions, we can follow up with you at the end of public comment, but we're not going to do a Q and A right now.
Oh, that is the question. I don't think people sitting here realize we're talking about 10-story buildings downtown. The other question is, how will the day, and maybe these are addressed to Mr. Smith, how will daylight planes be achieved? Who's going to profit from this development? Somebody will. Who will own the buildings and collect the rents? And I have to say, my tenants, who barely survived COVID, will not survive this.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Elizabeth Ford. Our next speaker will be Elizabeth Ford, followed by Amanda Yen.
My name is Elizabeth Ford, my husband and I live right next to Fremont Park. We're fortunate enough to be able to walk downtown. However, I think you need to know that even with our location, we never got anything on this until we received a flyer in the mail in this week. So, you know, from our perspective, you know, we would have been much more involved if we'd only known that this was underway. So I just wanted to let that be known. I'm all for affordable housing. Our son, who is disabled, lives in affordable housing in Sunnyvale. His housing unit is not housed in the middle of a dense location. And yet there are buses and other means of transportation that are not too far away. I am very concerned about the density that this is causing to Menlo Park. I want there to be new residents, I want more people to afford living near here. That's not the problem, the problem is the location, number one. Number two, it makes me very suspicious with the rush of all this that it was convenient for you guys to call these parking lots, you know, because you own them. What do you call, what's the? Thank you, surplus land, and they're not surplus land at all. And I just feel that the lack of communication, number one. My concern for the downtown and the stores and restaurants, number two. And thirdly, if you want to sell these things and have all your constituents be happy, we need to know what other areas did you consider? I can't, I just have this sneaky feeling that this was a convenient thing for you guys to do, to rush it through. And looking at the people here, you haven't convinced people that there were no other options. I would like to be convinced that there are no other options. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Amanda Yen, followed by Sophie Low with donated time from Scott Lamney.
I have one thing to share, I just received a text message that there are folks in this room that are uncomfortable providing public comment because of the cheers. So I'm just putting that in your head, so we did ask you not to clap, but we want everyone in this room to feel safe about providing their public comment regardless of what it is.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Amanda, and I recently moved to Menlo Park. So I'm a homeowner as well. So first of all, I want to say I'm not here to debate whether parking is more important or low-income housing is more important. None of the people stood here said that I'm opposed to low-income housing. Tonight, we are not here to talk about which one is more important, parking or housing. We're here to review the plan. And I think the plan is best characterized, it can be characterized as premature at best. You've heard from Mr. Smith himself that there are studies that's going to be finished in early twenty twenty-five, but we are trying to move past something and get a vote on tonight. So I think those are premature, and also I think the focus and priority of the plan itself needs to be clarified because I heard the word a lot about developers, developers, but I don't hear a lot of things about how it will impact the current resident or the future resident. Also, I want to make it clear that I think it's not a debate of whether we are focusing on the current resident or the future resident. Because if we don't plan well, there will not be future resident. I understand that, like, things are complicated here, so I'm not here to criticize the plan. I'm just here to urge you to slow down because we cannot rush into these things. Hear the opinion from this, from the room, hear it more broadly from people that cannot be here today. I mean, after all, this is a country that votes on things, right? Like, a few weeks ago, we voted who's going to run the country. So although clapping is not allowed, and please do not clap, for the existing claps that you have received tonight, I think you also hear the public or popular opinion. So please consider those, and that's really just, that's it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Sophie Low with donated time from Scott Lamney, followed by Latif Mizzidi.
Good evening, dear mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. My name is Sophie Low. I have lived in Menlo Park for over twenty years and started my first business in Menlo Park nineteen ninety-four, so thirty years ago. I am also a very active community member, I have been involved with the Chamber of Commerce and Menlo Park Rotary, as well as a peninsula volunteer. And being a property, I'm also, in fact, a property owner in downtown Menlo Park. I remember how difficult it was for me to bring tenants into downtown Menlo Park. But I was happy when I did it. At the time, this mayor and the city councils all came to thank me for bringing the wonderful tenant that I brought. During the pandemic, it was very difficult for the my tenant and the other merchants in downtown Menlo Park. I have to make rent concessions in order to help my tenant to survive during the pandemics. I am a longtime community member, and I support low-income housing. However, to build a low-income housing in downtown Menlo Park, it will kill the business in downtown Menlo Park. You know, I've been here for over thirty years, and I saw how we transformed downtown Menlo Park to today. It's a charming small town downtown, and it's a place for people to gather together. But lunchtime, if you go to Menlo Park downtown, it's very difficult to find parking. You know, this time I have to circle around the parking plazas and Santa Cruz Avenue for twenty or thirty minutes to find a parking, lunchtime. And then for us to build housing over there for probably that two or three years, the time we're doing the construction, all the merchants will be gone. So how long is it going to take for us to rebuild that? I think twenty years, thirty years? Also, I did not find out the detail of the history, but when I purchased the building, I was told there was assessment in the early years, perhaps in the forties or fifties, that downtown property owners was assess the fees for the city to purchase some properties so we can make a room to build the parking plazas. So all the property owners in downtown Menlo Park need to approve this project. Otherwise, you will be sued. You will be, trust me. So have you ever talked to the Menlo, talked downtown merchants, all the landlords, the property owners who pay the, you know, property tax? And then, and supposed to approve this? I don't think you did. And then for me, being the property owner in downtown Menlo Park and living within a mile from downtown Menlo Park, I have not received anything until two days ago in mail about this meeting. So I think it is important that we build low-income housing for our community. And then I suggest that we form some kind of committee that we're including the residents here in Menlo Park and the property owners in downtown Menlo Park so we can all work together to decide what's best for downtown Menlo Park and what's best for this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Latif Mizzidi, followed by Amy Ashton.
Hello, everyone, I'm the owner of Tech Loop Menlo Park on Santa Cruz Avenue. I've been there for about six years now. And I started my business at the age of twenty-one with my other friend, we dropped out of college. So we worked really hard for this. And I think pretty much everyone's computers on the whole Menlo Park area, everyone comes here. And we survived COVID pandemic, we survived. We paid our rent on time, luckily, my landlord was a nice guy. He did help me a little bit, but I never saw this, I survived COVID, but I don't think I'll be able to survive this situation because if I don't have parking, my business is dead, just like many other businesses. So I'm not against the sorry, I'm not against for low-income housing. But just for the cost of that, you cannot kill the whole downtown. If you really want to build, as the gentleman earlier pointed out, we have plenty of land here so that can be used instead of our parking lot. So I, individual, I'm a small business. I collect about thirty, thirty-four thousand every season for the estate in sales tax alone, one business. Do you think low-income housing is going to produce that much for you? Just from one business, you are collecting in sales tax thirty to thirty-four thousand dollars, one season, small business. I only have like nine hundred square feet, yet I'm producing that much. Consider other businesses, Ace Hardware, Coffee Bar, all those businesses, they're generating money. So that matters because if you have a nice town with a lot of people, but there is no money coming in for so that would be a problem as well. Just please consider, just don't just close down the parking. I mean, I'm not against it, I'm still young. I think I will survive that, even if my business fails. But it would be so disappointing to close down the whole downtown just to build like three, four hundred homes. And if it is really crucial, we have a lot of land, like everyone pointed out. So use one of those lands, but not the downtown. Every single business, every small business feeds three to four families, remember that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Amy Ashton, followed by Margarita. Amy, you should have an opportunity to unmute your mic. All right, so Amy, it does look like you're off mute, I'm not sure if your microphone is engaged. So I'm going to return to you, I will go to Margarita, and then back to Amy Ashton.
Good evening, council members, my name is Margarita Mendez, and I've been a resident of Menlo Park for over twenty years. And I remember when stores like Village Stationers, Soul Desire Shoes, and The Pet Place were bustling stores of our downtown. Back then, finding parking was easy, and we could shop locally for a busy, growing family. Now, most of these storefronts are filled with rug sellers or are empty. I fully support the city's plans to develop parking lots for affordable housing. I grew up in nearby Redwood City when it was known as Deadwood City. Today, that's a vibrant community with high-density housing in downtown and plenty of parking. Redwood City's leadership has transformed it into a place where families and businesses can thrive. Menlo Park City staff has identified these three city-owned parking lots for housing through a deliberate and well-considered process. I know this because two years ago, I went on a bike ride led by active members of our community who were willing to educate people like me by biking through the different opportunity sites to understand the housing element plan. Over the years, I've listened to concerns and complaints about building anything this side of the 101. But it's time to take action. We can and we must do better for the future of our community. I fully support city council's vision for a vibrant downtown with affordable housing on the land that the city owns. I want to thank the staff for reeducating the residents of the thorough process that was used to identify the city-owned property lots, parking lots, as viable for affordable housing. Thank you so much for your service to our community, please support this project, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Amy Ashton, followed by John McKenna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Amy, go right ahead.
Oh, wonderful, all right. I walk or bike to downtown Menlo Park several times to week, several times per week to shop, I love it. I think we all need to take a step back. The RFQ, at least as I read it, as a minimum, requires the replacement of five hundred-plus parking spaces or greater. These spaces will be replaced, and we will get much-needed affordable housing. It's really mystical thinking to believe that replacement housing element sites outside of the downtown will materialize after the two-plus-year process we have just been through. These sites were identified for a reason. Most of all, I was actually at Trader Joe's and Drager's yesterday, and I was thinking about those incredibly kind workers who help us all day. I wonder how long their commutes are, how much time they spend away from their family so they can serve us. I want them to live in our community, taking carbon emissions out of the environment and traffic off our roads. We follow Redwood City, Mountain View, San Mateo, Palo Alto, Sunnyvale, and Burlingame, who are all putting affordable housing on downtown parking lots. We can do this, we can be successful, we can contribute to the further success of downtown businesses. I really believe that firmly, so that's why I support the project tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be John McKenna, followed by Ann Paulson.
Mayor Taylor, fellow council members and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and apologies for not being able to be there in person. My name is John McKenna, and I'm speaking tonight as an individual and a nearly twenty-year resident of Menlo Park. First, I want to thank council and staff for their diligent work this year to finalize the housing element and the environmental justice element, both of which paved the way towards the discussion tonight regarding the downtown city-owned parking lots. Second, I want to thank council and staff for moving this years-long vision one step closer to reality. Building much-needed affordable housing in downtown Menlo Park will create a more equitable and inclusive city. It will also bring vibrancy and economic benefits to a downtown where residents will have the opportunity to live, work, shop, and play with the freedom to move around easily by foot, bicycle, and/or public transportation. I also want to express appreciation for the earlier commenters that spoke on behalf of the future affordable housing residents. I support the staff recommendation to declare parking plazas one, two, and three as exempt surplus land and to release the RFQ for affordable housing development on these parking plazas. In regard to the RFQ, I strongly urge the council to direct staff to move Item G, Sustainable Building Design, out of development objectives and into minimum project requirements. It is imperative that these projects are one hundred percent electric-powered in order to be aligned with the city's climate action plan. New construction is the low-hanging fruit when it comes to building decarbonization, and the city, as I understand it, has legal authority to dictate all-electric construction. Moreover, all-electric construction is the most cost-effective method and will result in healthier, safer, cleaner, and more energy-efficient buildings. I also request the RFQ include robust EV charging with the new parking. Lastly, I encourage the city to continue engaging with various stakeholders throughout the process to ensure that the end result is one that everyone in Menlo Park and beyond can take pride in and enjoy. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Ann Paulson, followed by Elsa Schaefer.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, I'm Ann Paulson from Los Altos, where we are also building affordable housing on our parking plazas. I'm happy to see Menlo Park fulfilling your housing element commitment to allow affordable housing on downtown parking lots. You already committed to this when you adopted your housing element, this is a promise. And it now only remains to do what you have agreed to do after a years-long period of public outreach. You were well justified in making this commitment to affordable housing downtown because, as because as other commentators are saying more eloquently than I, that housing is desperately needed. As you proceed forward with this process, you're going to need to identify alternate parking locations and make a parking management plan. Affordable project housing projects take time. It'll be three years or so before this project would break down, break ground. So you'll have plenty of time to do that. Please issue this RFQ and get the housing built. The area needs more housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Elsa Schaefer filed, followed by Ross Silverstein.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Elsa Schaefer. I live in West Menlo, Menlo Park at 1202 Sharon Park Drive. And I laud the entire city council as well as staff for this excellent plan, including replacement parking. And I'm so glad to hear that it could actually be more than the, the number of slots that are used for, for affordable housing. I am so grateful to live in a city that will consider and build affordable housing. Part of me wishes it weren't just because the state's going to make us do it. It is going to increase the customer base for downtown and they're going to be able to walk to all of these stores without polluting. Many of us have to drive down there. This is going to be wonderfully environmentally friendly with better air for our children and grandchildren. I, right now, I was shocked when, when I moved here and saw so many storefronts that were empty. And thank you to the gentleman tonight who explained that ongoing, it's been a 20 to 25% empty building situation. That is not a vibrant downtown. I, I was sort of stunned to hear people call it, it's the vibrant downtown center of our living here. I don't see that. I see it at three o'clock in the afternoon when there are a lot of students who come and get lattes or not lattes probably, but these mammoths, 1,200 calorie drinks and ice cream cones and things. But I don't, other than a few restaurants, I don't see it as, as that crowded. And particularly the parking areas on the side where, the three sides where the affordable housing is being recommended. But that's where I always go to park because there are always spaces there that I can find. I, I am grateful for the effort that's gone into this. I'd like to point out that there have been a number of points tonight that are made that make me realize that so many of the people speaking have not read anything about this plan yet because they make comments that fly completely in the face of the reality of what our first excellent presenter said was going to happen. And I, I was making notes here and I realized I can't even read my handwriting to give you examples of some of those. But wouldn't it be great if the Village Stationers had not had to close down because of too few customers? All of these people are going to be able to be customers here, not just of expensive rug stores, one of which also had to close down, but of, of so many of the, by the way, I have discovered the Goodwill Shopping Store. And as soon as I can make more time to actually go there, it has amazing things. Yes.
Ms. Schaefer, it's your two minutes, is that?
Okay, I'm so sorry, I should have watched. Anyway, I thank you, please do support this plan. And as someone said, it's going to be three years before anything else happens. Thank you for the exploratory.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Ross Silverstein, followed by Ken Chan.
Why do you need to stop?
Hi, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live in Menlo Park with my three kids and we bike to downtown Menlo Park every week, if not multiple times a week to do our enroll errands and shopping. I want to speak in strong favor of this proposal to repurpose some of our underutilized city land and keep the same number of parking spots, but consolidate that and repurpose the, the rest of the space for housing. I've noticed that it seems like the majority of opposition towards this potential project is because of fears that without parking, that the existing downtown merchants are going to struggle to get customers. I think that that has been empirically shown that more density and people who live closer to stores actually are excellent tenants and shoppers and people who can be great customers on a regular basis and a daily basis without having to drive. I know that years ago, when New York Times Square was pedestrianizing that area, the local merchants were in big opposition to that because they feared that their customers wouldn't be able to drive right in front and pick up their goods. And now that is some of the most utilized retail space in the entire country. So I, I just think that it has been shown that if we are able to bring hundreds and hundreds of more people who live within walking distance of all of these stores, that will do nothing but actually vitalize, vitalize and bring more customers to these merchants as opposed to forming any, any form of struggle. Thank you for this consideration and I hope that you guys pass this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ken Chan, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Menlo Park City Council members. My name is Ken Chan and I'm the senior organizer at the Housing Leadership Council, San Mateo County. We work with committees and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. I'd first like to extend our appreciation to staff for their hard work on their report and presentation tonight. On behalf of HLC, I'd like to highlight that city-owned land downtown is one of the best available resources your city has when it comes to building 100% deeply affordable homes. And as indicated in our letter, I'd like to reiterate our support of your city's effort to create affordable homes on three city-owned parking lots in your downtown. This is because to ensure that people, especially members of your community, to be and stay well, both physically and mentally, for your children to grow and to flourish, you need to ensure that all of them have housing that they can count on. A stable home anchors people's health and provides the ladder to future success. Your children won't get very far if you don't plan for their housing needs and the needs of the people in your community. Their potential will continue to remain out of reach. You can help by enabling the construction of affordable homes on three of your underutilized city-owned parking lots in downtown. By doing so, you'll also be supporting your local businesses by allowing their employees to live near their places of work. And you'll also be helping to create a much more vibrant downtown by increasing the number of people who live in and who can walk to your city stores and restaurants downtown. Most importantly, you'll be enabling the creation of safe and stable homes for your most vulnerable community members. Don't let this opportunity pass you by. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Jordan Grimes, followed by Michael Wodenski.
Yes, good evening, council, honorable mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lifelong resident of San Mateo County and a lead member of local housing advocacy group Peninsula For Everyone. I strongly support this plan, as does Peninsula For Everyone, especially as a member of a younger generation who loves his home, but has a very hard time seeing a future here. And frankly, a future for my family, who has been here for three generations now. The claim that building affordable housing downtown will create a doom loop or diminish the downtown or turn the area into a high-crime environment like the, the mean streets of Palo Alto could not be further from the truth. There are numerous examples in our county alone, including San Mateo, Burlingame and Redwood City, where parking has been replaced with high-density affordable housing. All of these cities have absolutely thriving downtowns. Menlo Park can too. This will enhance the city, not detract from it. The plan is a win for businesses, for the community at large, for the entire county. It satisfies the commitment to the state of California and I urge you to move forward with it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. I apologize for that delay. Our next speaker is Michael Wodenski, followed by Marcy Abramowitz.
Good evening, I'm Michael Judas Sessi. I'm calling tonight from Hoover Street. First, thank you to council member Nash for exchanging communications with me over the past few days, as I've expressed my opposition to declaring without adequate facts and necessary city land instead is surplus property. I ask to speak now simply to follow up on the, on Vice Mayor Combs' clarifying question. I would appreciate it if the staff and council would indicate whether a vote tonight that lots one, two and three are no longer necessary for city use and therefore constitute surplus property will bind future council members, including the two new members who will take office in a few weeks. Also, who can reverse such a determination once you receive the after-the-fact parking study promised for next summer or beyond? I hope those questions will receive answers before anyone votes to declare facts that at least to me do not appear to be true. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Marcy Abramowitz, followed by Lemonia.
Hi, good evening, council members. I, I know you all are in a rush on housing. But I would like to encourage you to please take appropriate time and care to properly analyze parking needs. Looking at table one in the staff report, I believe that the wrong conclusion was drawn. To come up with the minimum of 506 spaces, someone looked at the noonish peak time period and added up all of the filled spots. And what wasn't counted in that calculation are the cars and the people in them with dollars to spend who could not find parking and drove away. So I'm not sure what day in September the study was completed, but there was a day in September when I had a noon apartment, appointment on Oak Grove. I arrived about five minutes before naively and lot three was full. So I spent what was probably close to 15 minutes driving around through Plaza Three, down Oak Grove and then back again. And then I became one of those stalker people looking for someone, walking through the lot so I could follow them and take their spot. It was not a fun experience. If I had not had an appointment and someone waiting for me, I would have left. If I had wanted a coffee, I would have skipped it. If there was something I needed to buy, I would have gone somewhere else. And if I was meeting a friend for lunch, I would have ended up ordering something really simple because I would have been late. My takeaway from table one is that downtown businesses are losing business right now because there is not sufficient parking. So 506 or even 556 spaces wouldn't, should not be the maximum, but instead a floor. Our, our downtown merchants have a hard enough time as it is. So I, I know you're rushing, but please slow down and get the parking issue right before moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Lemonia, followed by Catherine Dumont.
And hi, I'm not opposing the proposal or I'm not even in favor of the proposal. I have no opinion yet. I live five minutes away from downtown Menlo Park, driving distance, and I visit the Menlo Park Library weekly with my kids. I just had no idea until like two days ago that this proposal was, was going on and I just need more time to, to assess it. And I have received no mailer, no mailer in my, in my house. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Catherine Dumont, followed by Katie.
Good evening, council and staff and mayor, vice mayor. Yeah, I, I urge the council and staff to stay the course as set forth in the city's 2023, 2031 housing element. I was very well-informed during the two years that I was involved with the housing element, the plan, the process, the communication of meetings. There was a, a lot of, you know, education involved. There was some great education done by John Willowsen on what the housing element was. And there were numerous meetings looking at maps of where there was available land. I'm a, a senior and a renter. I very much like living in Menlo Park. I'm very concerned about the shortage of housing. And, but I still, my husband and I patronize downtown businesses. Off the top of my head, I could name 20 places right along the main drag there where I, where we shop, as service providers, we have medical providers right there, there. I'm not at all concerned about parking lots being moved around or replaced by other parking. I can still get to where I'm going. I'm not going to stop shopping at the places that I like and I'm hoping more places will come on board to support the folks that it would be moving into the area. I'm not a high-income earner, but we spend money downtown and we will continue to do so. So thank you, please support the, release the RFQ and declare the parking lots as surplus land. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Katie, followed by Austin Osage. Katie, you should be able to unmute your end. Okay, Katie, I will come back to you after Austin Osage.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Austin.
Hi, my name is Austin Osage. I'm a property owner at 870 Santa Cruz in downtown Menlo Park. And I am against this plan. I don't think that the proper studies have been done by the city to go forward with this plan. And I am worried that the businesses that are in our building will not survive with, with removing all the parking from behind our building. So I do not support the plan and please don't move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, gonna return to Katie and then Kate Horst.
Hi, everybody. My name's Katie and I live right outside of downtown Menlo Park. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, I live right outside of downtown Menlo Park and I walk my dogs downtown. I have three children, small children growing up in town. We go downtown, we use all the businesses. And I've been serving on the Menlo Park Atherton Education Foundation for 10 years on the board, where we support Laurel School, Encinal, Oaknoll and Hillview Schools and help fundraise the extra $4 million a year it takes to help subsidize the students. The state does not give us enough money per student, so we have to go and ask for additional donations from the community and parents to help support the school district. My fear with adding more building to downtown is that we're going to have an influx of, you know, 300 plus new students, let's say. And our schools are already busting at the seams, including our very, we have one middle school that services three elementary schools and we're already full and needing to build a second middle school. So I'm concerned about how building right downtown is going to impact our school district in being able to actually support and pay and house all of these students in these schools. We have a ton of room over off Marsh Road on the way to the John Barton Bridge over by Facebook. There is a ton of land over there. So I would encourage the council to please look at other large pieces of land in and around Menlo Park to see where else we might propose additional low-income housing. I am all for it. I would love my teachers to be able to live right downtown that have to drive in an hour away. I am all for it. But we also need to really take an impact on what this means in terms of the resources that are already compromised in our very small town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Kate Horst. Next up is Kate Horst, followed by Nevin.
Thank you very much. I agree with the previous speaker. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
So my concern is exactly that, and I also want to ask, how is it that the Menlo Park City Council approved the Spring Line community without asking if they and requiring a low-income housing option? Because if you look online, those properties are very expensive, and I'm really disappointed that the Menlo Park City Council approved the Spring Line community to have those properties that are unaffordable. The second thing I would like to say is I agree with the school issue that she just raised. And the other thing I want to say is that Redwood City has a lot of housing. How is it that we can't offer housing that some, that people can buy as opposed to rent? These are corporate and developers who are trying to make money by renting things. We need to support our communities to own property. And finally, I do think that increased density does increase crime. So I disagree with that other person's comment. I'm worried about crime in Menlo Park, and I would like to support that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Nevin, followed by David Ferrari.
Hello, Mayor Taylor and the City Council. Thank you for hearing me today. People kind of speak abstractly about city-owned land, and I think it's important to comprehend that we talk about city-owned land. It's land that belongs to the residents of our city. And as such, it's crucial that they are informed and that you get their input regarding decisions. Menlo Park is a city that historically studies things, sometimes at nauseam, prior to making decisions. I think about our El Camino visioning plan many years. I believe I heard our Coleman Street Plan was in thought for two years. I think it is accurate to say that without the exemption that you are considering, these parking lots would in no way constitute surplus land. It is only via exemption that they would be considered surplus land. So effectively, three of our five City Council members have the ability to choose what happens with the land that belongs to the citizens of Menlo Park. I find it to be very hasty that you would make such a decision without a full parking plan being studied and with only two community outreach events, many of which have not been fully informed to your residents. You are here to serve the residents and their needs and interests, and it feels as if you are rushing without fully taking their interests into account. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be David Ferrari, followed by Brian Baskin.
I am David Ferrari. Just kidding. I've lived here my whole life, 68 years. Four generations of my family. My grandfather came here 78 years ago, even built the biggest structure at the corner of Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz, and said, "This is where my family is going to live and die." I've had a business here for 48 years in real estate. I'm a property owner on Crane Street. We have an office building. I was the integral part of bringing Left Bank here and am a part-owner of it. In dealing with tenants in this city over years, I can tell you property owners live off the tenancy. Most of what I've heard on my building is when we would get tenants, "How's the parking?" Back then, it used to be a lottery to get a parking ticket, $200 for the year or whatever. I don't even think that exists anymore. We've lost tenants because of parking not being available. And you are rushing this without so many things not to be, has not been considered, in my opinion. I'm also involved in a very large project in San Leandro, a 50-acre development that has hundreds of units. 132 public hearings 15 years later, and maybe we're going to start breaking down in April. It is ridiculous when I see this council considering this movement in such fast terms. I totally reject your proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Brian Baskin.
Hello, I'm Brian Baskin and on and off resident of Menlo Park for 30 years, which is kind of odd to say. I'm struck by a couple of things with this. One is that the haste with which this whole process is happening, thinking back on the, you know, the auto dealerships that lasted essentially half vacant on El Camino for 20-odd years, waiting for something to happen. And this one, my friend Kevin, who is a property owner down to Menlo Park, told me a week ago, and we're quite active in the city, my family is. I had absolutely no idea that this was on the docket. And this is a drastic change to Menlo Park. And just sort of, the thing almost strikes me, this is sort of like beachfront property in Malibu is what we're talking about in terms of these parking lots in downtown Menlo Park. This is the most prime land in the city. And not just for prestige factor, it really doesn't have anything to do with that, but in terms of the sort of the vitality of retail. You know, I always get very suspect when your housing advocates call in and talk about how it's in a retailer's interest for something to happen. And then when the retailers come forward in droves and say it's not in their interest, that really makes me question generally of, in whose interest is this proposal? Is this in the interest of Menlo Park residents? Is it in the interest of the schools that my kids go to that would then have 345 very low-income housing units added to? Is it the interest in, of, you know, in whose interest is this? And it very much strikes me, this is the kind of thing that is in a broader set of interests that's not in the interest of, candidly, you know, the folks of Menlo Park who are the ones who in some way own this land. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And with that, Mayor Taylor, I have no further cards or hands. You may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to everyone who provided public comment. At this time, I'm going to take about a 10-minute recess. Thank you. Do it to nine o'clock.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So having our city council back at our dais. Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene.
Thank you. And again, thank you, everyone that provided public comment and everyone that was patient and listened. I'd like to bring it back to the dais and open it up for discussion with city council to see if they have any questions for staff or follow-up from public comment. Councilmember Nash?
I was wondering if the city attorney could talk a little bit about the Surplus Lands Act? And how the parking lots meet that since we've heard some opposition to it being called surplus lands?
Sure, yeah, happy to address that. I also have Mary Wagner with me who will be answering questions along with me. I'll start by addressing a number of the comments that were raised that were disputing the resolution that's before the council tonight with respect to the definition of surplus land. So the Surplus Land Act has been in existence since, I think, 1968. In 1968, the state created the definition of surplus land and later adopted the definition of exempt surplus land and said that if a city wants to dispose of, either sell or lease for a period of 15 years or more, any city-owned property, then it has to declare the land surplus or exempt surplus. Tonight, the resolution that's before you declares land exempt surplus. So it does not declare the land surplus, the definite which you heard a number of times tonight, which does indeed mean land owned and fee simple by a local agency that is not necessary for the agency's use. Instead, what the resolution tonight does is declare the land exempt surplus, which means the city can lease or sell the property if it falls under one of the exemption categories. I want to reiterate what Mr. Smith said earlier, which was HCD has already reviewed the city's resolution and preliminarily approved it. So HCD, as the agency that regulates, has regulatory authority over the Surplus Lands Act, has already determined preliminarily that the resolution is compliant and consistent with the Surplus Lands Act. So even if you don't want to believe me, you can believe HCD because they've already looked at it.
So if I can follow up, I think there was two issues regarding that. There is whether, you know, this, like, whether surplus or exempt surplus applies, like, right? Based on the characteristics of the parcels. But then there was also this idea of whether the city actually has fee simple control and ownership of the parcels because of the history of their creation and some monies paid by property owners into some assessment district that went to acquiring them and their upkeep. And so I want to be clear, it is your city attorney's determination that the city does have fee simple control ownership of these parcels and then has the ability to essentially sell them as it sees fit, along with whatever state laws apply.
Yeah, so the city definitely has fee simple, owns the properties in fee simple. The title report reflects that. There is no bright line rule on when and how much time must pass after assessment districts and assessment districts' benefits are realized that a city can dispose of property that was used to acquire and develop, that was used to acquire and develop the property through an assessment district. But what is clear and what the California Supreme Court has said is that assessment district members and entities that pay into an assessment district do not have a claim that their rights as assessment district members exist in perpetuity. And the Supreme, the California Supreme Court has said exactly that. And so in this case, what we did is we looked at when the assessment district was formed, how many years the assessments were paid into it, and how many years have lapsed since those last payments were made. And we have determined that we believe the value of the assessment districts has been realized by those that paid into the assessment districts. And again, the Supreme Court has said you don't get the property in perpetuity just because it was originally acquired through an assessment district. And I'd be happy to share that case with any of the other attorneys in the group that weren't aware of it.
I also heard a comment or a question during the public comment about why parking lots 1, 2, and 3 versus other parking lots downtown. And that wasn't described as much earlier. And I'm curious if staff could provide a little bit of explanation about the thought that went into suggesting these three parking lots?
Sure. So at the August 27 meeting, when it was discussed, all eight of the parking plazas, we laid out different factors for each of those parking lots that might make them suitable for development or pose some sort of difficulty in that process. So if you're looking at parking plazas 4 through 8, which are south of Santa Cruz Avenue, we identified a number of easements. Some of, I think, at least two of the lots have multiple ownership issues, where, for instance, Wells Fargo owns a portion of the lot. So it's not a perfectly rectangular lot, but it'd be a little bit strange to develop around that. Trader Joe's, for instance, has lease on a certain number of parking spaces in one of the lots from us. That's long-term. And so there are some complicating factors for lots 4 through 8 that weren't necessarily in place or could be remedied through lots 1, 2, and 3.
And there were two other questions I wanted to have the staff respond to. There was also a question about where and why not in other places? And I'm curious, sorry for the offhand question, but do you know how many affordable housing units have been built in District 1 in the last five to 10 years?
We would need to do a little bit of research to figure out that number offhand. I don't know that we'd be confident to give you a total right now.
Thank you. And I also know someone asked a question about what about below-market rate affordable housing within other projects that have been developed, including Spring Line? And correct me if I'm wrong, but on all housing developments in the city, there's a requirement for at least 15% of all those developments to be slated for affordable units?
So I'll turn that over to Community Development Director Chow, she'll give some more.
Great, thank you for the question. So yes, under today's, excuse me, BMR ordinance, developments that are 20 units or greater are subject to our city's BMR ordinance, which is 15% of the total number of units. With respect to Spring Line, that was approved and built during a time where our BMR ordinance was suspended. And so there are BMR units at the site, but those were through the commercial linkage versus our inclusionary zoning.
And all those affordable units and all the developments that have been done so far, do those count towards our RENA numbers that we're trying to reach for the different affordability levels?
Yes, so those units counted towards our prior RENA number and so things that are developed now. So even some of the things that just came online, like our Menlo Uptown, now known as Loom, and Menlo Portal, now known as Vasara, those would count towards our current RENA.
Thank you.
I want to mention mostly for the audience that District 1, which is the Bayfront area, in addition to having a lot of development and especially residential development at this point, would not be compliant with the AFFH, the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing. Perhaps you could say a little bit more about that, if there's anything more to say?
Right. That is a requirement for a housing element is to affirmatively further fair housing. And that means not concentrating development in any one particular area, but spreading those developments throughout the community and especially in higher resource areas, which are downtown, is considered a higher resource area.
And in addition to the services and transportation, there's also the issue of education and the quality of education.
I have a follow-up question about RENA. Did the city fulfill its last RENA cycle?
We met our above moderate, we exceeded that by quite a bit. We did meet our prorated numbers for low and very low. And I think that if my memory serves me right, we were a little bit under on moderate. But in terms of the lower income categories and the above moderate categories that the state was tracking, we did meet our requirements.
And do any of those units carry over that we did not provide?
So there was a window of time at the beginning of, I believe, last, there was a six-month window last year, I think in later 2023, where we could count projects and sort of things I mentioned in the presentation, the idea of a pipeline. So a number of Bayfront area development, we can count the units that are being produced there. But we, once the cycle closes, so January 31st was the start of the new cycle, we have a little bit of a look-back window, but from then on, it's January 31st, 2023 to 2031.
Thank you. Councilmember Doorn?
Thank you. There were also some questions from the audience about studies that have been done about housing opportunities and how to pick sites. And I'm curious if staff could speak a little bit more to the studies that were done leading up to the housing element, so 2021, 2022? And especially Ms. Dean, thinking about economic implications of different sites that are being proposed. I'm curious if you all could speak to what studies were done initially to think about how these would fit in as opportunity sites? So I suppose general studies, thinking about traffic and how these sites fit, as well as any economic considerations?
So it was an iterative process of determining the opportunity sites. We started out with some higher-level strategies in terms of how we could select sites. And I think I mentioned, we also have some criteria that were set. So looking at like at least a half acre to 10 acres in size, again, the high resource areas. And then we went through a process with the state, some back and forth, where we would list out sites and potential densities, and then we would receive feedback from them. It had, it has to be feasible development. And so that was sort of part of their evaluation was, is it likely that these sites will turn over? So as I mentioned in the presentation, that's looking at, is there a long-term lease on a site? Is there available land on a site that could be utilized? The cost of land is very high, obviously. And so through that process of narrowing down the sites over a period of a couple of years, we ended up with the sites that we have in the housing element that was certified.
Thank you, and I promised last question. I want to ask another more pointed question on the timeline. So from what we know, there are no proposed projects, there's no proposed developer for these projects. What is the timeline for when a project design might actually be in hand for the community to actually respond to something that's more tangible with different components in it?
Yeah, that gets to the point of, right now, we have the high-level program from the housing element, 345 or more very low-income units. Through the RFQ, we're looking to identify affordable housing developers that we think are qualified to do a project. And then a potential next step with council's direction would be, do we want to ask for proposals from a select group of developers? And at that point, I don't think we would have very detailed plans, but we would at least get an idea of how a site would be laid out, a potential number of units. And then that can start to factor into, well, what does that mean in terms of needs related to the site, setbacks, height, all those things?
So breaking ground, considering all those steps, maybe wouldn't happen until two to five years from now?
The housing element has a very ambitious timeline for the, the project. But I think in terms of the actual progress, it, it could take a period of years in order to, to implement.
Thank you.
Just a follow up question. When does the timeline start? Does that start once the RFQ is, is released or?
Not necessarily. So if, if the RFQ were approved and we did receive responses from developers and returned to the city council, then there could be still further direction for additional steps in the process, like I mentioned, potential for an RFP. And so we wouldn't really be getting to entitlements until we, as a city, had confidence in a certain developer and a development concept or a proposal, if you will, that, that lays out some of those details. And then from there, entering into an actual agreement and then building out all of the different requirements, all the things that the city would like to see as part of a, a development. So the housing element includes 2025 in the timeline. That's a, a guideline for us, but I think there could be steps to get there that may or may not take longer.
There was a question about how tall the building can be and about daylight planes.
So with state legislation, there is the potential for, let me start by saying, in the specific plan area, there could be buildings, and it depends kind of on, on what level a development would be built at, but whether at the base level or bonus level of, of the specific plan. But you could end up with, at the lower end, potentially four to five stories, the upper end, potentially six to seven stories. And then the additional state legislation, I think there was a mention of 10 stories. State legislation says because of the location near transit, within a half mile of transit stop, that you can add three additional stories beyond whatever the city's zoning is. So at the high end of the city zoning at seven stories, adding on potentially three more could result potentially in a 10-story building. There is a requirement for a facade height in the specific plan. So the max that you would see as someone walking along the street would be 40 feet in height. And then it would have to step back at a 45 degree angle for the remainder of that height. So there would be some tapering back, if you will, from the, the street level above 40 feet.
And can you explain at all about the daylight plane and how that would be affected?
So there, there wouldn't be a, a specific daylight plane, but there is, it's similar. It's called a building profile. And that would be at the, at 40 feet in height, then going inward into the site at a 45 degree angle. All development of the stories above that would need to stay within that 45 degree angle.
Vice Mayor Combs?
So, you know, some of what we've heard tonight is, is, you know, opposition to the proposal. And that's clear. We've, we've heard some support also for the proposal. But some of the voices we have heard have expressed concern that, that they weren't properly informed of it. And we can go back and forth about that. I've, I've been here long enough to, to have seen that, that, that before. But setting that aside, I, I do accept that some members were not informed and like, who, whether it's them who have the, the responsibility for that, or whether that's some miss on our part. Again, like I say, I'll set aside. But if one way we sort of can mitigate or remediate that is, you know, not acting tonight, giving some, not necessarily giving staff additional direction, but giving the community sort of more time to understand and educate itself on, on the history here and the proposal. Like what are, what are the risks there that, that you see? If it's that like, let's revisit this at some point in the new year and, and pick back up, like, is there some, again, like, is there some, some risk from, from your perspective? And, and I'll, I'll say, I mean, again, you can answer it from, you know, staff technical perspective. I'm not asking you to make like a policy, like assessment, which I know is, is for, is for, for the council.
I think the, the main thing in delaying is simply just, we report to HCD on progress and meeting the housing element. So we would report that there were discussions about the RFQ, which I think was outlined for this year. And then indicate that we're continuing to engage with the community, work through the process.
And, and is that part of a mandated regular reporting that we have to do to them? And how, like, when is that next report or?
Yeah. So we report on a calendar year to them, but the report doesn't need to be filed until the following April. So we would have, we report out on progress through December 31st of this year, and we would send that report to the state by April.
Okay. But in theory, even though they're getting a report in April, in, in theory, even though that report only reflects up to December 31st, obviously it goes without saying that like, if something happens between December 31st and the, the having to actually submit that report, I mean, that, that, that's, that's real thing that, that happened. And so that's certainly what kind of, you know, in fact, they would know that, right?
Yeah. And we could also provide additional information beyond what happened at the end of the calendar year for, for reference.
What are the best opportunities or the best times for the public to be involved in this? What, obviously, there's definitely a need to sort of bring everybody up to speed and sort of why are we here? Why is this going faster than other projects, which I guess would be a good thing to answer? But also just where, where are, where are times when this city should be very cognizant of reaching out? And the public should be very watching for information?
Councilmember Nash, I think there are multiple ways that you could address it or answer it. Certainly, we've heard that residents believe that they should have a say because of the knowledge, the complexity of the project. So there are residents, there are property owners, there are business owners. I, I, I believe that it would have to be a multi-pronged approach. And how do we reach everyone? I think that would be a challenge to bring to the communications manager. How do we better bring this to everyone's attention? In terms of the business owners, we heard that loud and clear on Thursday morning, that they, they believed they needed more information. And that particular meeting was coordinated for property owners and business owners in the downtown area.
I'm actually thinking of going forward.
Okay.
Past is past. Just when are times when people should be, you know, when is the best time to be engaged, other than all the time?
Well, probably all the time. And as we go forward, or as we've done in the past, when there's something coming up at city council, how do we make people aware or a planning commission or housing commission meeting, how do we make people aware? And that's a, a communication challenge. In terms of businesses or the downtown area, one of the things that I did following Thursday's meeting was speak with Amy Buckmaster, who you understand or may know as the CEO for Chambers-Sammetale County. And Chambers-Sammetale County now has as its realm multiple cities, Redwood City, Menlo Park, I should say, Menlo Park, Redwood City, San Carlos and Belmont. And Amy and I talked about this a bit. There are standing committees within Chambers-Sammetale County that are focused perhaps on regional issues, but focused on housing, transportation, education, economic development. What Amy and I discussed was perhaps bringing something down at a lower level, not those standing committees, not that they can't focus on this, but at a lower level to have more outreach to the business community. And she agreed that she would be willing to partner with the city of Menlo Park, with Economic Development, the city of Menlo Park, to coordinate some focus meetings, some virtual meetings, perhaps one through three, whatever the number is, trying to reach out, gather more information. We certainly want to hear from the businesses. We want to hear from everyone. But how do we, going forward, whatever your decision tonight is, going forward, how do we tailor this so that there is an RFQ process, perhaps an RFP process? But the voices from the community, business owners, property owners, are heard in terms of perhaps forming the way in which we look at a, a response to an RFQ or a response to an RFP? And also being the clearinghouse for the developer, the potential developer to say, these are the needs that are being expressed right now by the Menlo Park community. Now how are you going to help us meet those needs?
Councilmember Doer?
Thank you. I appreciate Ms. Dean. Thank you for raising those points. Because I, at least I feel very strongly that we, of course, care about our business community and want to make sure they're deeply involved in these decisions. And I think especially as, as we were moving from a, a blank page with some broad ideas and some requirements from HCD for what we have to do to meet our, our housing requirements. And we moved towards actual plans and thinking about developers and what that might look like. I would really want to see the city move forward and, and doing deeper engagement and outreach as we look at RFP processes and actual plan development and, and the kind of things that we've done with other developments as they've, as they've moved along. I think that's going to be incredibly important. And I appreciate Ms. Chow at the beginning for sharing some of the priorities. And I think you summed it up very well, that we need to work as a community and include the business community deeply in this conversation. And we need to think about especially three main things that you brought up. You mentioned convenient access downtown is a priority, both for businesses and for residents. That looks like car parking, bike parking, transit solutions, like Palo Alto has, other, other opportunities. We need to support downtown vibrancy, both for current businesses as well as future businesses that can hopefully fill that 25% vacancy. And also we need to think about and plan in advance of any designs, how we would address potential impacts from construction to, to reduce the impact to folks as that construction is happening. So I, I, I appreciate all those points. And I know there's been a lot of concern that the city is moving quickly. And also I, I want to stress that there are no, no imminent, things are going to be built two to five years before anything hits the ground. We have no developer. There's no project. There's no idea what this will look like. And this is the, the start of a really vital time to continue and to deepen public engagement and outreach and get that feedback to help create this plan. And as, as staff have shared, we are required by the state to do housing developments. HCD has highlighted our downtown parking lots, which the city owns as a priority site for building. Staff have emphasized today and, and, and over the years, looking at the housing element too, that because the city owns this land, we can use it to meet those deeper affordability requirements that cannot be met by other projects like the SRI project and others, where we, we have an opportunity to do this deep affordability. And as, as other folks have commented here too, the, the importance of building transit oriented development and build housing where it makes sense, near services, near transit, near retail, near shops, is a priority for what we need to and have to do if we're going to build and advance fair housing throughout our community. So for all those reasons, I'm, I'm excited to support the, the two staff recommended items here. We're also noting that we needed to increase and deepen our public engagement, because as we can see here tonight, folks are not satisfied with what's been done. And I think that there's a really productive moment to move forward with input. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah. So I, I think we've, we've moved into giving our, our thoughts or, or direction. I, I think so for me, I, I'm in the, at the position where I don't know, like, what are the risks or costs of, of sort of, you know, pausing, continuing this item based on the feedback that we're getting, you know, to, tonight? And so here are longstanding key figures in our community. And, and they are saying, I think with some legitimacy that like, this change is monumental, which it is. They feel that they don't have the information or complete understanding of what all of those impacts are. And again, we can go back and forth on that, but as I sit in this chair, I don't know, like, I, I think the greater risk is kicking off this process in a way that for some of the most significant members in our community seems illegitimate than, than pausing and saying, let's see, like, how we bring them along. Or then if we can't bring them along, but then we, we do it not at the meeting before Thanksgiving week. Because how you do things is really important. And the, and I may disagree with them, but lots of residents showed up here, more residents than I've seen in this council since the pandemic. And they are saying that like, I don't like the way this is happening. And if I were, you know, a professor at Stanford, I might be like, oh, I don't care. I'm an academic. But as a politician, I sign up for a role that has to be responsive to that. And so for me, yeah, don't clap. And, and so for me, that, that's, I think, where I am. And we did, and the council has set some precedent. Just in our last meeting, we continued the oversized vehicle ordinance based on this idea that we would give that decision to the future council. I think this decision is more significant than that. And we were willing to punt that. So I don't know why we would then sort of bring this in and say, like, again, with, and there was like, nowhere near, we had like two people or three people show up for oversized vehicle ordinance with all of these people that, that we would say that, yeah, I hear you, but we're, we're just going to continue. And, and so for me, that, that's where I'm, I'm at. And, 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 and so for me, it would be, I don't have any specific direction to staff to go and do something different. But what I will say is that like, at this moment, what I'm hearing is, is enough to tell me, let's pause at this moment and, and officially sort of continue the item and, and look at what a, another time might be to, to, to bring it back in, in the new year.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Willison?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I appreciate my colleagues' thoughtful comments. And I also appreciate the many, 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 many emails we received from folks who shared their thoughts on this. And I want to assure people that I have read all of them. And I, I seem to have a grasp of what the concerns and the issues are. I see this as different than the RV item. To me, this is continuing on a journey that we have been on for many, many years and had many, many conversations on. And I am sympathetic to the issue of outreach. It's one that has come up time and time again. And I know that at my home, we received many mailers and many newsletters and many drive-bys of electronic signs regarding the housing element. And I know as a council member, I did everything I could to bring people along on that journey, which was painful, trying to figure out exactly where in our which was painful, trying to figure out exactly where in our city to put our, not only our state-mandated housing needs, but our community's housing needs, being that we do have people working in our restaurants and our stores that can't afford to live here. And we need to be able to provide housing at all income levels throughout our city. And so I feel very comfortable voting on this tonight. And while I'm sympathetic to the concerns that I've heard, I don't see what more time will buy us. To me, more time, more time just means postponing the delivery of the affordable housing longer. And given that this is a commitment, and as one of the public commenters said, a promise that we've made in our housing element, I don't see how we're not going to do this. And as outlined by staff, this is kind of the beginning of a new process where there's going to be more meetings, where we're going to have community input on the potential RFP, and the developer is going to come in, and we're going to figure out the parameters of what it's going to look like and how it's going to sit and what's going to be on the first floor and how high it is going to be and exactly all that. And that is more opportunity for the public to weigh in. So I think if we're waiting to ask for permission from the community, that to me was the housing element. And so now we're looking for feedback on what the actual design of the project is going to be. And I think that will come. I do hear concerns about, you know, construction and replacement parking. And I think we have a very thoughtful staff that can look to the multiple cities that we've heard of in our neighboring jurisdictions who have done exactly what we are looking to do, which is build housing on parking lots. And those cities didn't crumble, I don't believe, during that process. You know, I frequent our downtown businesses too, and I obviously value them. I've bought more puzzles from Cheeky Monkey than I would like to admit, and I plan to buy a bunch more. And I believe there's a way to do this where we can chew gum and walk at the same time. But at the end of the day, I think we need to follow through on the commitments. I also think one of the things I've heard from people that literally stopped me walking my dog is about downtown vibrancy. And I do believe, having seen kind of more density arriving at other cities and neighboring jurisdictions, that there is more vibrancy that can come with that. And so I am with Councilmember Door in terms of ready, being ready to move forward on the staff recommended actions this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Willison. Councilmember Nash.
So I agree with what you're saying. However, I believe that we do need to pause. And I would like to do it to a date certain in January, either a date certain or at least a month certain. I don't want it to go further than that because I do think we have a need to make sure this is, we get some movement on this because we do have HCD. And as was mentioned, there is the builder's remedy, which is hanging over us if we are not building new housing and moving it forward. And I think this is different, well, this is something I think we have a legal commitment with our housing element to proceed. But I think that right now, with, we need to do more outreach. We need to get past the holidays. I think that this is, there's many different things going on here. I also think that the, right after the holidays, the RFQs will probably get more attention than they will during the holidays. We will probably get a better product from the respondents. We will have a new council, which very much respect the council members who are leaving. But I think that this is a big decision, which will be moving forward. And so it's worthwhile having the new council seated. Also, in the interim, we have a very time-sensitive project right now with the Sunset, which has a 60-day calendar clock for the city to respond to. Hopefully, it may allow staff to put a little bit more time into that and maybe still have a holiday yourselves since that's a 60 calendar day and as opposed to, it's, well, it's 60 calendar days. And I think that we do need to do something different. I think we need to figure out how to better reach out to the public, both residents and businesses. And I also think it behoves the public to be active in reaching out to the city and paying attention to whatever is presented and sent out. And if people have ideas as to what is the best way to reach you, please let us know. Because the city tries very, very hard to do outreach, and it is a challenge. But I would like to see it to have some sort of date certain or at least know that we'll do it one of the meetings in January. And in the meantime, have some, have outreach to the residents, to the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And I appreciate everything that's been shared by the council. Councilmember Door, you have something to add.
I do. I just wanted to make sure, Councilmember Nash, that I believe Councilmember Willison mentioned this, that the housing element program has said that we will circulate the RFQ within 2024. And so by pushing it out, that's actively going against what we've laid out in our housing element.
I think that's right.
And also, another consideration that I'm thinking about is, I'm very excited for the new leadership and also thinking about who has had the most touchpoints with the housing element process and thinking about that longitudinal connection there. And just something else I want to put out there, that is a concern that I have.
I would, I agree with both points. And I still would stick with the January timeline and very much appreciate what you have done with the housing element and all, and hope that you will stay involved.
I mean, I just wanted to chime in. I appreciate your points, Councilmember Door. But I challenge the framing there. I mean, to be blunt, you won't be here to deal with this decision. You won't, you won't be on the side and you have said that you're moving out of the community. So if you ask me, like, who I want to decide, the person as they're heading out or a new person who knows that they will have to deal with all of the ramifications and engagement and the consequences that comes with those decisions? I'd like, give me the new person because they have the real skin in the game. So I just, because I just don't think, I mean, you went there with that framing. And so I'm just going to give you the other side of that coin, to be very blunt.
Before we move on, I just wanted to check. I just got a message from the city clerk to see if Greg Cologne was still here. He submitted a public comment card. Just wanted to give him an opportunity to speak if he is.
This was for Greg Con, okay, perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Herron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Greg, I know you had submitted a card for item D, which is general public comment. So we can go ahead and accept that now.
I apologize. I was here a little late today. So I appreciate your letting me speak. I'm representing Carpaccio's Restaurant. They want me to express for them their opposing the building of the housing on, in front of their restaurant. And they're concerned about the fact that currently evidently the, the, the city is not enforcing the three-hour parking limit. And as a result, it's hurting their business substantially because there's no parking available to meet their afternoon business. So that's something that can be done irrespective of the housing additions. And they do, are concerned about the housing units being added in front of their restaurant. So I think that's basically the two or three things that the ownership wanted me to express to you tonight. And if there's anything that we should be doing, they should be doing to fix the three-hour parking problem, that they would certainly be willing to do it. So I think that's enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And I didn't mention that Atherton is now the suburbs of Menlo Park.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the Diaz, since each council member has already weighed in, I will weigh in at the moment. But I do have a question. And I believe that Councilmember Nash already asked it just about pushing this out into the early New Year. And to me, I always look at what the impacts on staff are. Sometimes it seems postponing it provides more work. Sometimes postponing it provides less work. So I wanted to reach out to the staff to find out where you are.
The staff would be comfortable. If the council directs us to move to the New Year, it wouldn't create additional work for us to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, Councilmember Door.
Thank you. But to do additional outreach, that would require additional work. And I know that was something that Councilmember Nash mentioned. And so I'm curious if that was factored into that answer.
Yes, if council directs us, and I think we are hearing a need for additional outreach work, that's something that we would continue to do. And that would be some additional work. Pushing the item itself is not a constraint, but staff time would be dedicated to doing that outreach to make people more aware of the project.
And just to chime in, irrespective of the council's decision today, you have direction to do more outreach. Right?
Right.
Thank you for the clarification, Vice Mayor Combs. And thank you for the follow-up, Mr. Smith and Ms. Chow. I appreciate it. I am happy that this project is before the city because I believe that there is an opportunity in Menlo Park to not just to have good governance, but also to have equitable development. The majority of development that I've seen recently has predominantly been in one area of the city. And if we look at the city map to see where we are building affordable housing, the majority has been in one area. There has been some projects in District Two. I'm not sure if there's been any in District Three at all or District Four or District Five. And so for me, I look at this as an opportunity to provide safe and adequate housing. I see it as a way to improve the aesthetics and potentially the circulation downtown. Also, to provide additional parking and then to utilize publicly-owned land to increase project viability. I also see this as an opportunity around good governance to make sure that the city is doing adequate outreach. And when I hear that folks have not been informed, it makes me concerned. Not that we are rushing the process, but it is probably the hardest part about government is doing outreach because there's always someone that didn't know. And so without you providing that input to us, we cannot improve. So I believe that we can through this process by waiting and having a vote in December. I'm sorry, I'm going to say in December, but actually in January. So I'm supportive of moving our decision to a later date and has nothing to do with who is or who isn't on council. I respect all of my colleagues here at the Diaz. I know that it's been toward the end of the year. I know that our city has a large vacancy rate. I also know that we are all exhausted. And so this is an opportunity to take a deep breath and come back, not just with a clear head, but also with the intention of listening. Because that's what we do the majority of our job is, is to actually listen to you all. So in that note, do we need to take a vote to move it? Or do we just?
I mean, I can, I can make a motion to continue the item to a future date unless staff feels that that is not necessary.
I think a motion would be in order.
And then also through the mayor and vice mayor, in terms of whether the state certain or not aspect, I think there might be some benefits to target that first meeting, which would be January 14th. The second meeting is most likely going to be January 28th. So I think I'd rather people hear tonight that the meeting might be January 14th than have the uncertainty between the 14th and 28th. Again, it's the possibility that it could be delayed. I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want it to be sooner than the 14th. So I think contemplating continuance to January 14th might be beneficial in terms of getting the word out.
And so you could continue it to that date certain?
I'll move to continue. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
If there is a specific date in January that we're targeting, then I think it would be helpful to know the extent of outreach, given that the holiday season is approaching. And so the types of outreach that you would want us to conduct would be helpful to know during that season.
So I think, first of all, you have an Affordable Housing on City-Owned Parking Lots webpage that you were just developing. I think that that's an excellent place to put information and possibly be able to put that on the front page of the city website. I don't know how difficult that is to do so that people can have a single place to go and that we can basically tell everyone here will know that that's where the city webpage is the best place to go. Beyond that, I would look to the expertise of our communications department. I'd be happy to provide some comments, but.
Yeah, can I, I was going to say, I'm certainly not a communication expert. But I know we have that mobile tote sign. Can we put that in one of those parking lots and say, this parking lot is scheduled for redevelopment. Learn more here. Or did we already do that, Fran? And I just didn't see you, which is very likely.
No, I was just going to add that it would be a very visible sign and would probably help. In particular, if that sign brings you back to the webpage or things that planning populate on the website.
Perhaps also having some QR codes, if not on the sign, maybe on something attached to the sign or maybe around town.
So I'll just, so I do have a motion, but it doesn't have a second.
I will second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Nash to continue this item to the January 14th, 2025 meeting. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. Thank you. And the motion passes with City Councilmember Door and Willison dissenting.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for your time. And next, we will move on to item G2. G2 is to approve the commitment of $600,000 from the Below Market Rate Housing Fund to Alliance Strategic Development for the production of affordable rental units located at 320 Sheraton Drive. Here to introduce this item is our management analyst, Adam Patterson.
Good evening, members of the city council, as well as members of the public and staff present and online. My name is Adam Patterson, and I'm a management analyst with the housing team in the city of Menlo Park. Tonight, we are reviewing the notice of funding, BMR funding request, excuse me, by Alliance Strategic Development. Thank you. Now known as Alliant Communities, as a point of clarification in the application, it was Alliance Strategic Development. I will refer to them as Alliant Communities from here on out, related to 320 Sheridan So we are here tonight to review a funding request for $2.9 million from the BMR Housing Fund. I would like to note that after the publication of the staff report, the applicant indicated via email that, understanding that there are $2.6 million in unencumbered funds remaining in the BMR fund, that they would like to modify their request from $2.9 million to $2.6 million. The action for the city council tonight is to direct staff on the commitment of the funds and to return with a funding agreement. A brief overview of the project, which the applicant will cover in greater detail later. The 320 Sheridan Drive site is shown here and is approximately 2.5 acres and is the site of the former Flood School. The project consists of 88 total units, 87 affordable housing units, and one property manager designated unit. The project is 100% affordable and consists of one, two, and three bedroom units ranging from 777 square feet to 1,450 square feet. The project is targeted at Ravenswood City School District employees, and the site was identified in the housing element as a housing opportunity site. And during the housing element update process was rezoned to R3 zoning, which allows up to 20 dwelling units per acre. Although the BMR agreement for the project is a separate item, not be considered here tonight. It was recommended for approval by the Housing Commission on November 6th and is important for the context for this funding agreement. As part of that agreement, the project is subject to the city's BMR ordinance, which requires that 15% of the base units be subject to city preferences per the city's BMR guidelines. After the previously mentioned rezone to R3 zoning, this increased the maximum, as I mentioned, for 20 dwelling units per acre, making the base unit count 50 units, which then results in eight units for city preferences. To be clear, so the eight units of city preferences of the 87, so there would be 79 remaining units that would be targeted at Ravenswood City School District employees. And again, to be clear, the BMR agreement is separate from this funding agreement, and that will be finalized along with other project entitlements and approved by the Planning Commission as the final approving body. So in April 2024, the city received a BMR funding request application from Alliant Communities for $2.9 million to support the project. The project proposes deep levels of affordability ranging from 30% to 80% of area median income, or AMI. 80% represents low income and 30% represents extremely low income. There's a targeted average affordability expected of 50% to 60% of AMI. And here's a sample from the application of the unit count per affordability level. On November 6th, the Housing Commission reviewed and discussed this funding recommendation. As it is the recommending body to the city council on BMR funding and NOFOR requests, staff recommended providing funding in the amount of $600,000 with the additional criteria that any unfilled units of those 79 units that are targeted at the Ravenswood City School District employees be subject to city preferences. The Housing Commission recommended approving funding without that additional city preference criteria for the remaining 79 units that may go unfilled by RCD employees. And this is to provide flexibility to the applicant in, as they seek additional funding to fill any remaining funding gap, that they could potentially, for example, provide unit preferences to another funder. The Housing Commission also asked, as part of their approval of the funding recommendation in the BMR argument, that the city consider the city's anti-displacement efforts and how it could apply to units of this project. And this is noted in the staff report, and I'll note here that the city does have in its BMR guidelines a displacement preference that is equally weighted with other city preferences. And finally, the Housing Commission asked that the applicant explore in its property management plan the criteria used for applicant screening, which the applicant has agreed This proposal satisfies several city housing priorities identified in the 2023-2031 Housing Element Update, including Policy H42, Housing to Address Local Housing Needs, including city's workforce and families with children; Policy H43, Variety of Housing Choices, which strives for a variety of housing types, densities and affordability level citywide; Policy H4.12, Emphasis on Affordable Housing, which strives to locate 100% affordable housing developments, particularly in areas near existing amenities in high opportunity areas of the city; also at 30% to 80% AMI with an average, again, a targeted average affordability of 50% to 60%. The project does provide a deeper level of affordability. With this in mind, staff recommends that the city council approve the commitment of $600,000 from the BMR Housing Fund to Alliance Strategic Development for the production of 87 affordable rental units located at 320 Sheridan Drive, including the city's preference criteria for remaining units unfilled by Ravenswood City School District employees then be potentially subject to city preferences. And then to direct staff to return with a funding agreement. The applicant will now provide a brief presentation, after which staff and the applicant will be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Not better? Thank you all for having me tonight. Thank you for your stamina. I know it's already been a long evening, so I'll try not to go too long here. And some of the stuff, I think you're all familiar with our project already, so I won't go into too much depth on that. But just as a quick overview, I'll start with who we are. Alliant Communities is a developer of affordable housing, workforce housing, mixed income housing. My own background, I'm sorry, my name's Steve Spielberg. I think I know you all, but I joined Alliant in January after spending the previous eight years with EAH Housing, a nonprofit affordable developer based here in the Bay Area. And tonight, I'm joined by my partner, Will Eager, from the school district and our land use attorney, if there are any questions, after the presentation. So I think everyone knows where the site is, but just for reference, I've got it here on the screen. And then here's just a little bit of background on the site. If you're not familiar, the site is a former elementary school and has sat vacant for about the last decade. The district evaluated multiple different options, which I have since learned are actually by right. If the district decided it wanted to develop, say, a bus yard or other property that the district would use as school property, they wouldn't have to go through the same kind of entitlement process that we would as a multifamily developer. However, they decided to RFP it and selected us as a developer to develop affordable housing on the site. We, oh, and other interesting facts, the city did a, sorry, the district did a survey of staff, and one of the things I found interesting and helpful is that 43% of staff are considering leaving the district because of the high cost of housing or length of their commute. And so this would be a big help for them. So I'm just going to run through, this is really not about the physical building or location, but I'll just run through it so you see it. When I joined Alliant, and this may have been the last time that you saw the project, it was originally envisioned as a four-story building. We have since changed it into three-story buildings and changed up the massing to best fit with the neighborhood. Here is what the three buildings currently look like. And here's an overall site plan for the project. And so I think staff touched on this, but the site was originally meant for teachers and staff of the district with a mix of 25% three bedrooms, 25% two bedrooms, and the rest is one bedrooms. There's a mix of incomes from 30% to 80%. I actually spent some time with this just last night, and I think what we will end up with is an average of 50% AMI across the property. And it might actually have a little bit greater mix than staff currently has. I was able to look at it where we would have 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, and 80% incomes in the property. And also, it was originally envisioned as 100% of the units for teachers and staff. However, we've recently discussed with staff complying with the BMR requirements, which I'll get into in a second. So at a minimum, we would have the eight units, potentially more, and help with some So this is really the slide that I came to talk to you about this evening. Back in April, we originally applied for $2.9 million, which was to fill our funding gap and hopefully advance the project to a place where we could apply for tax credits and start construction. Over all this time, we've been out processing our entitlements, and we're now in a position where we're fairly certain that we will be in front of Planning Commission in mid-January. And in the meantime, during this process, kind of through conversations I had with various people, I began to understand that our project might not get the financing we applied for primarily because we weren't dedicating any units to the BMR, and we were using something called AB2295 to dedicate all of our units to Ravenswood teachers and staff. We took a look at that, and there was this threshold that you see up there. In order to apply for county funding, we would need at least a million dollars from somewhere else. Generally, that would be local funds. And so I discussed with staff if we could potentially set aside, go, kind of forget about AB2295, go back to the standard BMR procedure, dedicate 15% of our base density to live-work preference, and get at least the million dollars so we could move the project forward to applying for county funding. Then, most recently, we had the opportunity just two weeks ago to go before Housing Commission, and right before Housing Commission, we were informed that there were only 600,000 available. And so we gladly attended the Housing Commission meeting, and both staff and the commission recommended us for that 600,000. I personally expected that we might not be in front of council for several months, but we had the fortunate surprise last week of being asked if we wanted to come here tonight for the recommendation. During that less than a week period, I have come to understand that there is an additional $2 million that you all heard about last week that's actually not committed to any other project, even though it's been discussed for another project. And I would love the opportunity to request that funding tonight. One thing that I think speaks in our favor, if you'd be willing to dedicate that funding to our project, is that that's pretty much, if we got $2.6 million from council, that's pretty much the last funding we need in order to go apply for tax credits. So we are extremely optimistic, partially because of assembly bills that we're using with the planning department, that we will get entitled in January. And if we got funding tonight, we could take those entitlements and funding, apply for tax credits in the spring, potentially start construction by the end of 2025, really beating all the other potential options for that BMR funding. And so just a quick overview, so you can see it visually of what our timeline's been like. We've really been at this for several years already. So again, in comparison to the other project you looked at, this is way beyond concept stage. We're most of the way through entitlements, and we would hope to start construction in about a year from now and then be leasing up less than two years from now. So thank you for your time. I'm here for any questions, as well as, I would mention, our partner from the district.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from city council members before we go to public comment? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I believe that there was one other goal on the proposed project goals for the district, and wasn't that for revenue generation for the district? And could you say something about that, please?
That's correct. So in the original RFP, which I was not part of, so I don't know exactly how it was structured, but what we wound up with is there, when we close on the land lease, so essentially, once we get our tax credit award and we get to a construction loan, at the construction loan closing, the district will get an upfront land lease payment, and that first payment is good for the first 15 years, which is the typical tax credit compliance period. And then in year 16, we start making actual land lease payments to the district. And I believe this may have come up. Someone asked me the question, it'd be a 90-year ground lease.
And so thank you, Mr. Spielberg, for the presentation. So that begs the question, what is that payment amount for the first 15 years?
The upfront payment, it's $5 million.
To the district?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any other clarifying questions before we take public comment? City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G2, approve the commitment of 600,000 from the Below Market Rate Housing Fund to Alliance Strategic Development for the production of affordable rental units located at 320 Sheridan Drive. Who are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. Who are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. You're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press *9 now. We are currently at about seven speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G2. All right, and our final speaker is in queue, so we have a total of eight speakers. Our first speaker will be Gary Wagner with donated time from Raj Pilaali.
Hi. My name is Gary Wagner. I live in Suburban Park on Hedge Road, very close to the development. Our neighborhood supports the project wholeheartedly. We do have one, a couple of things that we would like to talk to the City Council about. I've already talked to four of you. If you look at the picture, you can see the 320 Sheridan Apartments. And if you look in the lower-hand corner, this is kind of a funny circle. And what that is, is a wind rose map that was taken from a wind report produced by the city of Menlo Park a couple of years ago. What it shows, if you read, I can't read the fine print here, but I know what it says. It says that 30% of the time, the wind in Menlo Park in that area is basically calm. 10%, there's minor winds from different directions. And 60% of the time, the wind is coming from the northwest. If you look at that, at the angle of the Sheridan Apartments, they basically go along the northwest, going from the northwest corner of Sheridan towards the southeast corner that is Van Buren. So in terms of safety, trying, closing off the one road out the, on the southeast means that if there's any kind of a fire, what's going to happen is the people that are in the apartments, and some of, many of them probably their most biggest possession is their car, are all going to try and charge out of Sheridan Drive onto Hedge. Both are 24-feet-wide roads, they're curvy, they will clog. You can see that the largest parking lot is on the backside in the southeast. And if wind is blowing from the Sheridan side, then that is the side that a fire truck needs to get in to pour water on the fire. In the recent fire that was off of, what, El Camino in Redwood City? No, it wasn't El Camino, I'm sorry, Middlefield in Redwood City, they had an eight-alarm fire, and the only fire truck that was able to actually pour water on the fire was the fire truck that was shooting with the wind from behind. The other fire trucks wound up spraying the downwind buildings to try and protect them from the fire. If you look at the south side of that apartment complex, you can see that there's a row of trees there, oaks and eucalyptus. I've talked, I spent 45 minutes talking to Chief Lorenzen, and he freely admits that it would be safer if there were two open exits, so that in case that you need to fight a fire, people would be able to go out the southeast and get to Van Buren Road, where it very quickly branches into a number of roads, so that people could get away, clear the way in case fire trucks came that way, and opening a way so that a fire truck could come in to Sheridan Drive with the wind behind and be able to put out a fire. We would request, we, we backed the apartment complex. We think it's great. We'd love to have teachers there. I, I think it's great. My father was a teacher, my father-in-law was a teacher, my sister-in-law was a teacher, and I have two nieces that were teachers. It's a tough job, really, if you do it right, and those people need a safe way to get out. Also, all of those people that work in the district are going to go east to get to work, to go to Willow Road, to go over into Bell Haven. Forcing them all to come out of Sheridan, go around Flood Park, get onto Bay, get onto Bay Road, which, by the last environmental justice report, is the worst traffic in Menlo Park, and then to stand in line, get in line to try and get past Ringwood Road on Bay is just beyond belief. I made the mistake this morning in going to visit my wife, that the, the traffic around 8:00 was backed up way past Flood Park. I noticed that you're doing, somebody's doing a traffic study. There were two, oh, tubes across the road that measure, measure speed and number of cars, and I think I went over them about three or four miles an hour. Pedestrians were passing me. Also, there are people in Flood Triangle who worry about the extra traffic. However, if they were able to come out along the firewall, where there, where it's possible to build a road on Caltrans property, they could go out Van Buren, which is basically an unused road. If they have to come around through Sheridan and then around Hedge and get onto Bay Road, that will increase the traffic on Bay Road, already the worst, and increase the traffic going past all of the open driveways from Flood Triangle on the south side. All of the people who would be able to, pedestrians and bicyclists, who would be able to go out an open gate there to get over the freeway, would then have to go around Hedge Road, come down Bay, and wind up going into Flood, going into Flood Triangle to get to the, the overpass, because they wouldn't be able to just go down Sheridan, pardon me, Van Buren to get there. Thank you for your time. We would ask that you hold up giving any monies until you get a, set a requirement that they put in, or at least research a second exit out there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Karen Grove, followed by Adina Levin.
I don't know how you guys do it. My brain is mush, but I am here to support this project, to support the funding request, and actually to ask us to give at least a million dollars so that we don't tie the project's hands behind its back. We're not giving the full gap financing, or at least as much as we can, which would be the 2.3 of the 2.6 million, unless it at least not make it harder for them. I also think we should probably sort of frame this as abundance. This project helps us meet our housing element goals. It helps our students who live in Menlo Park have teachers who can come back, having been displaced, who can stay and not be displaced, who can stay after school because they don't supercommute, and who are well-rested because they're not living in overcrowded conditions. So that's a big win for Menlo Park. And then, in terms of who gets to live in the housing, the people who work in the Ravenswood District, they either work in East Polter, they work in Menlo Park. And a third of the students go to school in Menlo Park, so I figured at least, well, at, about a third probably work in Menlo Park. But then there's the district office. I just asked Will, and it's about a quarter of the people who are eligible for this housing work in Menlo Park. So they already are our people. Like, we don't need an extra preference. But, you know, preference is nice, especially after the, the teachers have had their shot at it. Anyway, I support the project. I think we should be generous. We have the money in the, the fund. We've decided not to use it on another project, and we also need to look at ways to build up the fund. But we have a bird in the hand right now, so let's not let it fly away. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Adina Levin, followed by Skip Hamilton with donated time from Michael and Maureen Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, wanted to strongly support the project and support the funding for the project. I must confess that I don't really understand the nuances of the shifting in between the different categories of affordable housing. But what I do understand is that this project is bringing extremely welcome affordable housing to our city, enabling people to live in our community, and enabling us to, you know, accommodate neighbors and meet our obligations. And therefore, I think that this is good, and encourage the City Council to approve the project and advance the funding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Skip Hilton with donated time from Michael and Maureen Clark, followed by Elsa Schaefer.
Hello, City Council. Thanks for hearing public comment on the BMR funding request. I also submitted a letter yesterday with more details. Hope you take a look at that. And thank you, Councilwoman Nash, for recognizing and receiving that letter. My name is Skip Hilton. I'm a 31-year resident at Menlo Park, 27 of those years living in a neighborhood near Bay Road. Man, a lot of discussion tonight about affordable housing. That's great. That's what we should be talking about, and you guys are troopers for, for sticking out this long. I'm not here to push back on affordable housing. I'm not here to try to get it to be harder to be built, but I am here to help improve the affordable housing and make sure that it's better for the residents and better for the, the neighbors. Hopefully, for the folks here for the item G1, this serves as an example, actually, of how residents can get and stay involved to improve these projects as they go through the pipeline, instead of trying to stop them. As I understand, the housing development at 320 Sheridan can proceed without the standard CEQA review and without the approval of Planning Commission City Council, as it qualifies for fast-tracking by the state because it's 100% affordable housing, which is a good thing. As I said, we need more of that housing, especially if it's for teachers. But that means that the, only the BMR funding agreement is that's the only opportunity for us to provide input on the project and for the City Council to attach any requirements or directives tied to the funding. As you know, the city of Menlo Park recently adopted the Environmental Justice Element, which was mentioned earlier. Very useful report, long overdue, so good job on getting that done. But it told us over there what many of us already know along Bay Road, that the neighborhood where the new housing is going in received a traffic burden rating of 95, which is 34.7 points higher than the rest of the city average, and makes it the highest traffic burden across the entire city. The Justice Element also showed that this part of town has a pollution burden of 71, which is 15.2 points above the city average. Now, I, I assume that the Justice Element, the purpose of it was to help the Planning Commission City Council to consider the neighborhoods that are already impacted by these things when they make decisions to reduce the burden in these areas, and this is one of those opportunities. Now, contrary to some of the details in the funding application, the Sheridan site is not well-served by public transit, and it's, there's details in my letter on that. So these 80 new units will likely add hundreds of new cars, thousands of more vehicle miles traveled to the area, adding congestion and additional pollution. But to make matters worse, Atherton recently rezoned four parcels that are on Bay Road near the intersection of Ringwood for higher-density multifamily, family development for their own housing element update, which will bring 36 more housing units online, potentially 70 or more vehicles entering and exiting onto Bay Road in a very high-impact area already. We're landlocked over there, with Bay Road as the only access road to our neighborhood, which becomes congested with cut-through traffic from 101 whenever there's a slowdown or an accident. And it makes it worse on this already heavily trafficked area during morning commutes and school drop-offs. As currently designed, this project is essentially a flag lot with only one exit and 100% of the traffic flowing through Suburban Park, out to Bay Road, and further impacting an already busy artery. Commuters and other residents of the new housing, in addition to multifamily housing being added by Atherton, will have only one route to use daily and will be frustrated by even longer backups along Bay Road during the busy commute and school drop-off. As it is the only exit, these additional developments, more vehicles on Bay Road will also create more exhaust pollution, as idling vehicles are backing up all the way past Flood Park, bumper to bumper, waiting for the four-way stop at Ringwood Avenue. A second entrance to the development of Van Buren is an obvious and logical solution, and it will mitigate traffic along Bay Road, which is a safe route to school used by dozens of children and teenagers who bike to Laurel, Laurel Lower and Sinal School and Menlo-Atherton High School. We're actually very much looking forward to having our new neighbors that serve as educators in our community. I can't speak for everyone in our area, but I'll speak for myself. I'll speak for my wife, who served eight years on the Menlo Park City School District Board, and for all the neighbors that I've discussed with me. But we don't want these neighbors in, to live in a building that's unsafe, unhealthy, does not have options to shorten their commute by 15 or 20 minutes, and instead forcing them onto already heavily impacted arteries. These new Menlo Park residents have no idea how difficult it will be to live and commute to and from this new and affordable housing with just one entrance to their property. But we know how tough it's going to be, because we live there and we see the traffic every day. And now you know too. So this is an opportunity for us to fix this problem for them before it gets worse. On behalf of myself, my family, my neighbors, I ask that you do review and discuss the safety, health, and traffic benefits of a second entrance to the project at 320 Sheridan, connecting it to Van Buren. And if you approve the use of Menlo Park BMR funding for the project, which I hope that you will do, I would ask that you include a directive to the developer to work with Menlo Park Fire District, Caltrans, the Ravenswood School District, their client, in any adjacent landowners, to design and develop a second entrance to the property at 320 Sheridan Drive. I wanted to add one last note on transparency, communication, and community input, since that was also a big issue. And I saw that you tabled the G1 to provide the community more time. I attended the Menlo Park Housing Commission meeting that was mentioned on November 6, where Alliant presented their project and asked the Housing Commission to recommend that they receive the 600,000 of BMR funding. At that meeting, Housing Commission confirmed that they are not able to consider any input or modifications to the project, which was brought up. There were a few things that were brought up at that meeting, but that it is within the scope of both Planning and City Council to review and approve as part of the BMR grant. At that meeting, Alliant presented their timeline, suggesting going to Planning Commission in early December, and then coming to you, City Council, in January of 2025. The members of the public that attended that meeting assumed that that was the schedule and that the approval of BMR funding, but it seems like the, now it's being fast-tracked, the schedule's changed within a couple of weeks, and it hasn't given the, the public the opportunity to present their concerns and input for improving the project. I think very similar to what you were hearing some people were feeling. By, by contrast, I feel like we have a group of people that's very plugged in to this effort and trying very hard to stay involved and to understand the impacts and to, to be very purposeful, but also creative in how we can communicate with the decision-making bodies about these issues. So it feels like right now it's, it's kind of being shortcut. I'd, I'd love to hear more if you guys are going to discuss this, on what changed and why, or where there may still be opportunities for community outreach and public input, either at City Council or Planning Commission in the future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Elsa Schaefer, followed by Luis Morante.
Hi, I'm Elsa Schaefer. I live in and on 1202 Sharon Park Drive, and I, I've lived here six and a half years, I think, and feel still learning a lot of this, but several of you have been very helpful in helping me learn. I logged this project. I think it is a win-win-win. I think it's the easiest project you probably will ever have had in front of you, and I highly recommend using the full amount. I, I thought I heard 2.6 million. I'm hearing 2.32, but please don't prolong this decision-making. And the idea of prolonging it for a new council coming in, I have seen how long that really does take with the Board of Supervisors. It can be another year, a year and a half. This has to be an easy decision. On the, I think it's a win-win-win because it's for teachers, and I don't think those teachers are, well, one of, one of the other benefits is that we will have lower pollution that all of our families are going to breathe because they will be driving less. It's a benefit for our children, grandchildren, and the whole families, because it's easier to get to know teachers who don't have to whip out quickly and go elsewhere. It's easier for those teachers to attend weekend events here, too, and that's such a comfortable way to get to know families, too. And again, I, I underline that pollution issue. Oh, I plus one in spades, and my whole family, we have four voting members in my family, plus one Karen Grove's list of superb benefits of what this housing will give us. And also, one other fellow mentioned helping the, the housing element, helping get a And also, one other fellow mentioned helping the housing element, helping get affordable housing. And I like all the levels of affordable housing. Of all things that we now realize, we're, we have a lot of NIMBYism. That should help in spades, and it's at least a little bit of a positive there. Yes, it sounds important and necessary to add that second entrance. And also, I don't see these teachers as needing to use 101 and adding to that traffic because they're coming to our schools. That's a completely different route than 101. So thank you very much for listening. I appreciate the caliber of, of all of you representing us. And I look forward to a unanimous yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Louis Morante, followed by Ken Chan.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Louis Morante. I am Vice President of Public Policy with the Bay Area Council. The Bay Area Council represents about 350, actually, we just hit 400 of the region's largest employers. And our members tell us day in, day out, every year that we survey them, that housing is the number-one issue, oh, sorry, it wants to be a lower of my hand, that their workers face and that those companies face in their ability to recruit and retain the world's top talent. Projects like this are an excellent way to improve the region's affordable housing supply. I'm here in support of the full funding request. And if you, if you can stretch it to that additional amount, I strongly encourage you to do so. We all know the benefits of affordable housing, but I wanted to highlight some of the benefits of fully funding the amount tonight. You may know that affordable housing funds in the state of California are drying up in 2025. The State's Department of Housing and Community Development estimates that it's going to be able to release about $2 billion of remaining funding in the first quarter of 2025. For the rest of 2025 and into the foreseeable future, we're going to have about $200 million per year left. So that's a huge drop-off, and that's because several statewide bonds that were approved in the last five, six years are winding down. And so the benefit to you tonight of moving forward with the full funding that the project's requesting is that the project's going to get an early spot in line for additional state funding. So I think there's a real benefit to the community in moving this project forward fast tonight. I really commend the thoughtful discussion of this project and all of the folks coming tonight and supported this project. And on the Bay Area, on behalf of the Bay Area Council, I'm proud to urge our strong support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up will be Ken Chan, followed by Gordon Grimes.
Good evening again, Menlo Park City Council members. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the Senior Organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. I'd like to first extend our appreciation to staff for all their hard work in putting together the presentation and report on this very specific item. On behalf of HLC, I'd like to express our support for Alliant Communities 320 Sheridan Proposal. That's primarily for Ravenswood City School District teachers and staff. It needs to be acknowledged that the demographics of where we live are changing rapidly, forcing us not only rethink the types of housing we need versus what is being built today, but to also come up with new and innovative solutions to address our housing needs. The RCST homes, or what are primarily teachers and staff, can be one of those solutions, but only with your support. If we don't plan today for the housing needs of the people in our communities, people like your district's teachers and staff who make this community what it is, your community will lose what it values the most living here. It's been proven at this point that we all thrive when we can live near our places of work. These homes will reduce the stress caused by the time and expense that your teachers and staff spend on their already onerous commutes. Less commuting leaves more time for health, family, and more importantly, community. A community where your children can have a better chance of succeeding in school, getting a job, and building their own strong families here in Menlo Park because your district teachers and staff are no longer having to deal with the stress of just driving and finding a safe and stable place to call home. How you choose to respond matters. This is your moment to make a positive impact on your community. We urge you to seize it and to support the 320 Sheridan Proposal by approving Alliant Communities Funding Request from the Below Market Rate Housing Fund to bring 88 new affordable homes to Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes, followed by Katie Beruzzi. Jordan, it looks like you might have lowered your hand, so I will go to, oh, you raised. Perfect. Jordan, you should be all set.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening again, Council. Jordan Grimes, this time speaking on behalf of Green Belt Alliance. We're an environmental nonprofit working on climate resilience and sustainable land use throughout the Bay Area. We endorsed the Sheridan Drive project earlier this year and are here tonight in strong support. The Sheridan Drive project will bring significant benefits to the community from a multitude of standpoints, from deep levels of affordability to sustainability. The use of pavers on-site mean permeability will increase, which is great. And the significant bicycle parking included will allow people to drive less than they otherwise would. Contrary to other claims, this project will absolutely reduce VMT, vehicle trips, and greenhouse gas emissions. You have a great many people working for the district who are forced to commute in from miles and miles away, day in and day out. This project will allow lower-income workers in the district, the very people who allow your children to access the incredible education that's available to them, a healthy and dignified place to live close to where they work. That last part is crucial. The project itself really went above and beyond to ensure residents living there will be protected from particulate matter, providing state-of-the-art filtration and ATRAC systems. I think that's really important to note. And then finally, I just want to note that infill housing, according to the UC Berkeley Local Government Climate Policy Tool, is actually the most effective strategy that Menlo Park can employ to lower greenhouse gas emissions. So if you're thinking of going green, there's nothing you can do better than adding affordable infill housing. This is a really fantastic project, and we urge you to support and fully fund it tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Katie Beruzzi.
Hi, this is Katie Beruzzi. I serve on the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking in my personal capacity tonight. I actually live near this project. I am excited to see it come to fruition. And I just want to point out something very specific because I heard Mr. Hilton's discussion about the driving and agree that Bay Road can get pretty congested in the morning. I live on Bay Road. I just actually looked up on Google Maps how long it would take somebody to get from the site in question on a bike, not an e-bike, mind you, just a regular bike at a regular biking pace, to Ronald McNair, not Ronald McNair, to the Xavier Chavez Middle School. And I also looked how long it would take to drive using the Sheridan access point at 7:30 on a Tuesday morning, and it's actually faster to bike, even taking into account not biking very fast and even taking into account maybe people not having electrically enhanced bikes. So I'm excited to hear about the bicycle storage. I would actually really encourage the developers to ensure that the storage is ground-level and secure and easily accessed because if people do end up with e-bikes, they're pretty heavy and hard to get upstairs. But I think there are, there should be excellent opportunities for this to be a green development and for people to enjoy getting to and from work in under 10 minutes without having to break much of a sweat and without having to join the long line of cars on Bay Road. I also would encourage the city to give as much of the BMR funding as we can to make this project realizable. I worry about the previous discussion that we had, that some of the other affordable housing in our plan is going to be delayed and that we're going to be in trouble with HCD if we blow some of our deadlines. So let's not blow this deadline on a project that seems likely to transpire and provide some of the desperately needed BMR housing in our community. Let's like try it as hard as we can to stay ahead of the curve on this one. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Say no for their hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you to everyone that provided public comment. At this time, check in with council members to see if they have any questions or comments on this agenda item. Councilmember Dor.
Thank you. This might have been said earlier, but apologies for the late hour. It's skipping my mind. Could I please get a number on, Mrs. Spielberg mentioned that with a $1 million minimum, that there'd be new county funding made available. And I would like to ask how much money that would enable them to get for the project?
Mr. Spielberg, do you have that information?
So this is going off of last year, and last year, the county made available $2 million per project with the requirement that you had to have at least $1 million to apply. So, you know, to take it a step further, if we, if we were to get $1 million committed and assuming the county does the same thing as last year, that would put us into a cycle of potentially getting awarded their funding and applying for tax credits over the summer, which would be great. If we went with my original request, then we would avoid that and be able to apply for tax credits in the early part of the year.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Have you applied for outside funding or from other cities?
You're asking, maybe this is obvious, but specific for this project?
Yes.
Okay, so there really aren't any other sources? You know, one of, one of the commenters, Louis Morante, that called in alluded to that, but, and I did listen to that hour and 45-minute listening session that you had last week, and it's really not out there. And there's, the funding sources available for affordable housing right now are very specific, depending on where you go. So most other sources want you to walk in the door with something local. And then beyond that, the state has some sources. And so the sources the state has, one is a cap-and-trade, which there's a lot of money still available. However, I did a lot of research and this site doesn't qualify for that. The state also has some limited amount of MHP funds, which are going away pretty much entirely, which is what you heard about, but that's highly competitive and generally is won by projects that have an average AMI that would be 30 to 40%, not 50%, which is really just a completely different type of project. And so we've, we really, I've looked in depth. You know, this is, I'm not coming having not already explored all options.
Thank you. Councilmember Dor, and then Vice Mayor Combs.
Thank you. A few things. I know you mentioned a quarter of staff and faculty in Ravenswood work in Menlo Park. And a curiosity I have is if funding were increased for the amount that the city offers, knowing that there's already folks who work in Menlo Park who could be eligible for this housing, would there be any opportunities to increase this other share of, of units available to BMR qualifying residents or folks who work in Menlo Park unrelated to the Ravenswood School District?
Yeah, absolutely. I can't, I can't make that call in a vacuum, but I've discussed it with my partner over here at the district, and he said that would be a pretty easy sell to his board if we could get the funding to move the project forward, that we could carve out additional units. And also, it was asked of me at one point about displacement and, you know, how that would fit in and, you know, anything that meets fair housing law, we're very amenable to.
So there were some public comments in connection with the idea of a second access point and the possibility of linking some city funds to something related to a second access point. I'll provide my thoughts on that in a moment. But it would be great to hear from you about where you officially, as the developer or the school district, stands with regards to the possibility of a second full access. I know as part of the current plans, there will be an emergency access for the non-Sheriden side, the Van Buren side. But, but where do you guys stand with regards to the possibility of exploring a second access?
We're very open. I really don't have a stance one way or the other. I think that the options I've heard to add anything beyond emergency would greatly slow down the project. You know, I personally would like to get it built, but, you know, beyond that, I'm, I don't really have any opposition other than, you know, just the challenges of, I think the op, what's been floated by me by various residents are potentially using the Caltrans space above, yeah, which I guess everyone could guess what it might be like to work with Caltrans. But if Caltrans says, hey, let's do it, you know, I'd be more than happy to do that. Same with our neighbor there, Haven House. You know, they barely wanted us to have the emergency access, but if they said, yeah, build a full access, we'd be happy to do it.
Okay, thanks. I'll just, again, I see there, there's two points. There is this idea of linking a second access with funding, and then there is the principal issue of the funding asked to the city. So going to the initial point of the linking, I'll be very clear where I am standing. I'm not supportive of linking the current requests with something, some concrete delivery as it relates to a second access. I appreciate your comments, and I think that there's still a discussion to be had about a second access. But there are lots of factors that are unrelated to this, this project as it relates to a second access, of which one, I think, is important to point out that like there has been no real engagement with the Flood Triangle side as it relates to a second access and the extent to which we saw community members come here and, and business owners and express concern and some outrage that the city didn't engage them about a process that has been going on for two years. I think the idea that, that the city would sort of then at this moment try to link some funding with a second access would be, to me, even more, to be frank, kind of like outrageous and disappointing. That community deserves to like understand what a second access would look like. Again, this is a parcel, to be clear, that has never had direct access to that side, and this was a school. This was, this is not vacant land, and the same risk that relates to a housing relates to the school. So that, that community has not been engaged. And, and I will also point out, I think it's important to understand that like that community deals with traffic impacts as it relates to Haven House, and they will also be dealing with traffic impacts as it relates to that pedestrian access for Flood Triangle or for the Flood Park, where people will likely be dropped off. That's all impacts that, that Suburban Park community does not have to deal with at all. So I think it's important to have like a fair conversation. And, and, and it is not fair to suggest that like at this moment, the city should kind of like link a funding request with, with a second access, of which there's been no real engagement on a second access. So I wanted to make it clear where, where I stand on, on that issue. The second issue is the funding. For me, again, you, you saw the meeting last week. So this project I see as a deal between you, the developer, and the school district. And I assume that you guys modeled what the finances look like, given different permutations. And my assumption is that that model did not include input from, or funds from the city. Maybe it did. If it did, that probably wasn't the wisest thing to do. This is your deal, and again, it provides very valuable affordable housing to the city, but this is a deal between you and the school district. Last week, the, the city created its own deal in which we in which we took a scenario where we were to be guaranteed two affordable housing units. And we said, you know, know what? We're going to do something different here. We're going to, you know, engage in a deal, some swap, a three-party swap, where in exchange for what we were owed, which was the affordable housing units, we would allow that developer to give a parcel, a vacant parcel, to an affordable housing developer, Eden Housing. So this is like, this is a city deal. This is a city project now. We've got total skin in this game. And in that case, that developer asked for $2 million. And we didn't say no. We said no right now. And so I would find it challenging to give this project the full amount of money that's being asked for, all of the money that's left, when this is a school district developer project, in which, again, when you guys do shovel, when you get your loan, the school district will get $5 million. And I'm not saying that it doesn't deserve its $5 million, but it will get $5 million. Again, versus a project where I think we have more of an onus to make sure it's successful, and that's the Eden Housing project. So that's, and again, so that doesn't mean I'm no funding, but I do think it would be challenging for me to sort of be supportive of taking our current funding down to zero on this project, when I know that there is this other project that we created, and I think we have more of an obligation to make sure it is successful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And to follow up on that, where I'm struggling with the full amount is that my intention, looking at BMR units, because it's my understanding that we don't know when we'll have more, is to look at how we can utilize those funds around either anti-displacement measures, but something that can be an immediate, have an immediate impact. This is three to five years. I'm looking at how to house somebody in three to five months. So I'd be supportive of a smaller amount, but definitely not the full amount that's being requested. Let me see. I don't think I have any other concerns. I think they've already been brought up.
Mayor Taylor, apologies for the interruption, but looking at a time check, we will need to vote to extend the meeting past 11:00 p.m.
So is the council supportive of continuing, hopefully just until 11:30?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Time has flown. Let's see. So I don't, does anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Nash?
Well, I will just say I'm very supportive of the project. I think it's great to get teacher housing. However, I am struggling with any funds for a project where we would be giving you money and immediately, as soon as you get the tax credit and construction loans, you turn around and give money, and a greater amount, back to the school district. Not saying it's not deserved, it just does not seem like a good use of city funds to me.
Councilmember Willis?
Thanks. I'd be supportive of doing the $1 million so that you could be eligible for the county funds. Just listening to my colleagues, it doesn't seem like there's an appetite for your full request. But to me, that would be a logical amount, and that would help us support this project and support the Ravenswood School District, which is an important partner in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you. I would similarly be supportive of more, given that this is supporting a school district that also serves. It was really shocking to see that statistic, that 40% of Ravenswood families are classified as being unhoused. And that's a very powerful stat to me in thinking about this. I am supportive of at least $1 million to try to unlock that additional funding from the county. Thank you.
I will say I will vote no to on it, because I think that there is a very, the city and school districts are distinct. And so I am having trouble supporting this.
And so just sort of having this discussion out loud, if a majority of the council was supportive of the $1 million, that clears a threshold for you, based on the possibility of getting additional county. And that leaves $1,006,000 in the funds. And so I know we have the possibility of the Eden Housing project. Is there any other project in the offering that might be a recipient? Sorry, for BMR funds?
So, there are many. There's the 1030 O'Brien Project. I've been taking copious notes here that there's an estimation of about five. Oh, sorry. Are you referring to other requested funds or other incoming projects that may be delivering funds to the BMR fund?
No, not delivering funds, that may be requesting.
I see, I see.
Although, you can answer that question too. And if you have, like, some date stamps, like, rough date stamps, that would be good too, on the incoming. Maybe we'll start with that first.
I'll start with the incoming. Thank you. It is quite late, so it took me a second. Incoming, so there's one project, the 1030 O'Brien Project. Estimate of about $585,000. Rough timestamp of the second half of calendar year 2025. And then there is the 1005 O'Brien Project. That's a larger amount, about $3.5 million. That's further away, I think, at the absolute earliest. My understanding is end of calendar year 2025, at the earliest. And it says as a reminder, these don't get paid until building permit issuance. And they're not approved, excuse me.
Building until, wait, when the building permit is issued?
Yes, and they're not approved at this time, so.
Okay, the building permits. But it's a shovel in the ground. That's when we get the money, not a completed project, just to be clear.
The, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that is typically correct, that they must pay prior to building permit issuance.
Yeah.
And then to your second question, or your first question, about other projects that are requesting funding, I don't believe so. As we've covered here as well, we're pretty short on funds, so I don't imagine, yeah, we don't have any in the pipeline.
Yes, so that is correct, in addition to the one that we were just discussing from Eden Housing for the 1162 Elk Minarial Project. Certainly, the conversation that we had earlier this evening, the city downtown parking lots is a potential affordable housing project. And then I think, as Mayor Taylor mentioned, certainly looking at some of our other programs in our housing element that are eligible for use of our BMR funds, such as our anti-displacement policies, which, you know, we have kicked off that preparation of the strategy.
What about the 335 Pierce Road?
Yes, thank you. So that is an action that the city council has already taken and provided direction to staff to commit those funds. So the remaining funds that we have identified already taken into consideration, those that the city council has already sort of committed.
I think I could be supportive of $1 million.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And if there isn't any more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to move that we, I guess, dedicate $1 million of BMR funding for this project.
I'm happy to second.
Okay, give me one moment to just update the motion with the commitment of $1 million.
That's actually, I guess it's a question for staff. To be honest, I was a little confused about the proportion or the number of units and how that works with the city's preference, the city's BMR preference. At one point, I thought it was, it all goes to teacher housing in the Ravenswood School District. And then if there's leftover, it would go to the city's BMR requirement. But is that, am I thinking about that correctly? Or are we now kind of guaranteed a certain number? I would think whatever makes it the cleanest, I don't necessarily have an opinion about that.
Yes, so the recommendation that staff made was for the $600,000. So there are 88 units, 87 affordable, one property manager unit, eight of which are city preference units through the BMR agreement, through the 15% inclusionary requirement. The remaining 79 units, city staff is in their recommendation in recommending the $600,000 to allow for sort of a city's second preference on those units if they go unfilled by Ravenswood City School District employees. That, yes, that is part of our recommendation, but I don't know if you, if it is.
So I don't, maybe it's getting late, and I'm having a hard time comprehending things. So are you saying that if there's 87 Ravenswood staff members, faculty, that want the units, it would go all to them, and then it would trickle to the cities? Or are we?
So, sorry, eight are set aside for city preferences, so then there are 79 remaining. Out of the 79, if any were to go unfilled by school district employees, then the city would.
Okay, if that was what the agreement was, and everyone's happy with that, then.
That means it would be eight plus?
Potentially, yes, if there were unfilled units.
And those eight units would also look at, I know you can go back to folks who were displaced up to eight years ago. So would that be a consideration in this project too? Or is it just preference in the BMR policy?
The displacement preference would, what is in the BMR guidelines for the displacement preference, would be considered, and I believe equally weighted with other city preferences.
And that would happen first with those eight units?
Yes, that would happen for sure with those eight units. And then perhaps second, if there are unfilled units of the remaining 79.
I'm sure this question has been answered, but like, to what extent if someone is, qualifies for the local preference and is a Ravenswood employee, like, which one gets used first? Or do they get counted to both?
15% has to, 15% of the units have to meet all of our preference criteria so that they would kind of have the election on how they wanted to treat that unit. I believe, and we've talked about, to the extent that they can overlap our preference criteria with teachers and go above the 15%, they will do so, at least. I believe we've made that verbal commitment, and we intend to have the regulatory agreement reflect that, or the approvals reflect that, so that if there are enough people that meet the local preference criteria and our teachers, we won't just be, like, capped at 15%, if that makes sense.
So my motion then is the $1 million and then the way it's already been written up?
Yes.
So I think the one tweak or clarification that we would like is that when we left, or when we went to the Housing Commission, I had clarified that we would like the ability to, if we can go out and find other funding that has a preference, to be able to give that to them. And so if we essentially gave the district, you know, the initial preference and the city, the eight BMR units, I would want, say, eight units for whoever else might be able to provide funding and not have essentially, like, the rest of the units go to the city, which the commission was supportive of, which is slightly different than what staff is recommending.
So I'll just make this clear. Initially, I was supportive of $600,000, which is less than what your original ask is. One of the concerns that I have with affordable and housing projects is based on your funding determines on who has access to those units. I believe BMR units are intended for Menlo Park residents that fall in the guidelines of anti-displacement measures and priority. And so it sounds like that you're looking at additional funding that adds another layer to who has access to those units. The reason why I asked about.
Not for the eight.
I know, but I'm saying about the total project, because I'm looking at it as a whole.
Right.
Right, even though it's in Menlo Park, all these different funding sources determines who gets to live there. That's why I asked about, are any other cities providing funding? This is not just going to house Menlo Park residents, it's going to house neighboring cities' residents too. So is there a commitment from those cities? And the answer is no. So that's why I'm supportive of $600,000 and not the million, just letting you all know that. Because I do want to do something, because you are going to house Menlo Park as well, but just letting you know where I stand.
And just like, if you go and do additional deals, so like, right, though, we still get our eight, right? You, your additional deals are going to eat from what you've promised the school district.
Correct. And honestly, there's only one other deal I can even imagine, which is, my partner here came up with it. We, the idea was that generally affordable housing projects get their funding locally, because there isn't a lot of other places to go for that. And so he would go to other districts and see if they could give money in exchange for units. You know, on the other side, it sounds like it's already been decided, but if we were to move the needle from $1 million up to $2.6, we would proportionally increase the set-aside units for the city from eight to whatever that is, 20 or so set-aside for BMR preference.
But then, so if we had gone with where Mayor Taylor is at, $600,000, we would get something less than eight? I thought we were getting eight no matter what.
So. It was a, it was a kind of a crazy thing, that I verbally had a discussion with a staff member that's not here, and we agreed that for $1 million, we'd do the eight BMR units. And then subsequently found out there wasn't a million to dedicate, and it kind of left me in a funny predicament that, so.
Okay, well, it looks like you're going to get your million for your eight.
Yeah, I think you should quit while you're ahead and take the, take the million, and we'll take the eight, and just, yeah, if I, I would wrap this puppy up.
Thank you.
My advice, friendly advice.
Sorry.
Vice Mayor Combs, you're going to make the motion.
I think we have a. And I seconded.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Willis and a second by City Councilmember Dorr to approve a commitment of $1 million from the BMR Housing Fund to a strategic development for the production of 87 affordable units at 320 Sheridan Drive, including a city's preference criteria for remaining units unfulfilled by Ravenswood City School District employees, which are, oh, well, I guess, this is which are separate from the eight BMR units required to comply with the city's BMR housing preference criteria. So I looked at staff, is that sentence still included in the motion? After the discussion just had. The only modification to the motion is the $1 million.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nash has a question. What happens if Eden comes back and says that they do need $2 million? How do we satisfy that? Or can we?
I think it would be very, we would have to wait for additional BMR funds to be supplied into the BMR fund in order to create $2 million?
Well, I am already voting no, but I have a concern here.
I mean, we could on that, that we could, we have $1,006,000. We could give them $1,006,000, and then I think we're going to get some more money. And that's assuming that we would approve the $2 million ask for them. But that. that we would approve the $2 million ask for them. But that, that project is not as far along as this project. And so I, but I have your, again, like I said, that is our deal, and so we are very much tied to it being successful. But I do think we would, like, if we wanted to give the $2 million, I think the timeline should work it.
And one other thing to add, what fuels the BMR funds is approving projects. It's not just automatic. And Ms. Herron, we will continue the voting now.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Also included in the motion is to direct staff to return with a funding agreement. Any further city council question or discussion on this? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. Thank you, and the motion passes with Mayor Taylor and City Councilmember Nash dissenting.
Thank you. Moving on to our informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask questions on any informational items. City Clerk Herron, do we have any public comment on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, H1, city council agenda topics; H2, community-wide electrification program, home upgrade service, parker support; or H3, update on aquatic survey results and next steps for potential operational and fee adjustments. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Currently have one speaker, so this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, H1 through H3. All right, and our speaker will be Tom McCray. And Tom, let us know which item you're speaking on, please.
Hi, Tom McCray from Solo Aquatics. And it had to do with the interest in the aquatics. I would just look at it from the standpoint of, I think we're about a year into, a year away from the actual award of the RFP to the pool operator. And I know that recently there were some adjustments to the fee structure, and along with the questions regarding the budgeting and what the management of the pool was actually being paid. There was, there was an effort to kind of not disclose what that amount of money was. And so as we're looking at this, and I had stated this before, when I had come to council, my concern is to look at it from the standpoint of having full understanding of exactly what funds are coming in. And I know that we are so excited that we recently, within the last 30 days, were able to go ahead and get a contract agreement with Menlo Park, Menlo Swimming Sport. So it took us 14 months to get that agreement. So that's a little disheartening. But as this comes up again, to kind of look at it and say, hey, the RFP process, when we're just talking about funds, was $750,000. And we offered the full funding, the other operator offered to negotiate for 30% to 70%, and the current operator offered less than 1%. And so it just, as we look at funds and what's coming in here, it was just disheartening to look at it from the standpoint of, hey, we're looking at the, we're looking at this, and we're one year down the road. And so that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Great. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from city council members on informational Moving on to the city manager's report. Introduce this item. It's our city manager, Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have two updates, one related to the weather. So Menlo Park is expected to receive rain this week into the weekend, although most of the rain impacts are expected in the North Bay. So there's no predicted risk of San Francisco Creek or Atherton Channel flooding at this time. Up to two inches of rain is forecasted in upper watersheds through the weekend, leading to some flowing water in the creek channels. Tide levels are also decreasing from the high levels over the king tides this weekend. We're monitoring local conditions throughout the storm season. Menlo Park is under a wind advisory this evening through Tuesday, through Thursday morning, excuse me, Thursday morning, with the highest winds expected tomorrow. You can learn more about how to report issues like clogged drains or downed trees, about how to prepare for storms at menlopark.gov/storms. So again, that's menlopark.gov/storms. Second item is related to the next city council meetings. That's scheduled for December 10th. That's typically the ceremonial meeting, where we can recognize outgoing council members, incoming council members, the rotation of the mayor, role of the mayor. So this year, we'll be holding a meeting, it'll be our first city council meeting at the Bellhaven Community Campus. So we're very excited to be able to announce that. We've identified that location on our posting on the city website. We'll continue to reinforce that messaging, so hopefully everybody that wants to attend that meeting knows the proper locations. That's December 10th at the Bellhaven Community Campus, and for the city council meeting that should start at 6 o'clock. And that's it for updates this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. The next item is our city council member reports. Are there any report outs from our last city council meeting? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Last Sunday, I went on a downtown tall buildings walking tour in Palo Alto that was really exciting to see some of the buildings that ranged from 50 dwelling units per acre at 360 Forest Avenue, which was surprisingly low number of dwelling units per acre, to 326 dwelling units per acre at 345 Forest Avenue. And I will, actually, I will send a link to the walking tour to City Clerk Herron to have available and perhaps post. So, but it was, it's well worth looking at it. It was really eye-opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And if there are no more report outs from city council members, this meeting is adjourned.